Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I will call to order the City Council meeting for November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Beck, with your roll call, please.
Mayor Mangat.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wong.
Here.
Councillor Barnes.
Good evening.
Councillor Friedland.
Here.
Councillor Gallegos.
Good evening.
Councillor Sampson.
Good evening.
And Councillor Tapia Vega.
Here.
Mayor, we have a form.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll begin tonight's meeting with public input. If you wish to speak during this time, please make sure you fill out one of these white speaker forms that you can access through the glass doors in the back and get it over to Clerk Beck and we'll get you on the list. You'll have five minutes to speak. Please state your name and address before you do so. You also have the opportunity to call in as well. Tonight, we will begin with Karen Norback.
Karen Norback, eight hundred. Good evening. I've been thinking about the mayor's comments during a meeting a couple of weeks ago when he told us he was going to resign and pass the baton to a new councillor and a new mayor. He said he was a reflective person and had just turned thirty after spending his twenties at City Hall and was now ready to spend time with friends and family. I remember when he used to sit out in the cheap seats with the rest of us and I watched him through his time on council. That word he used, reflective, is a good one and it has stuck with me since then, so I'm going to borrow it as the theme of what I want to say tonight, as we come to the end of yet another council with three members leaving and a new council waiting in the wings. The mayor is off to spend time with family, Councillor Sampson will have time to figure out more ways to use gray water, and Mayor Pro Tem Wong, I imagine, will be looking through what I expect is his vast collection of data points. Sadly, I don't have a collection, but I do have an assortment of notes and documents. This morning, I looked back at notes from your retreat as you started out as a new council. My memory told me recruitment and communications for boards and commissions was part of your discussion. Yes, it was, and filling vacancies twice a year was on the table, as was updating the board's bylaws. Since then, I've watched as you've had workshops and ongoing discussions about putting changes to the boards in motion, tweaking those changes, sometimes more than once, and creating a new recruitment process. The new process puts all boards on the same footing, and a couple of weeks ago, it became apparent that perhaps despite all your and staff's diligence, the planning commission is not benefiting from that. I heard that during the open house, no one went over to the planning commission table. I feel for those who manned it while everyone passed on their way to the more artsy groups. Perhaps if there were neon lights, dancing donuts, and celebrity guests, there might have been more interest, but alas, there's no money in the budget for such extravagance, is there, Katie? So we find ourselves with a bit of a situation that I am sure no one expected to arise. Not only did we not get new applicants for the commission, which by itself is troubling, but the timing of the vote to appoint comes at the same time as an election and the end of a council term, which has its own issues. As I often come before you with suggestions, I am here to do that tonight. Reflection on time spent on council tends to happen at these meetings as councillors' terms end. Tonight is no different. There is a proclamation honoring Mayor Pro Tem Wong's service. However, later in the meeting, that will be overshadowed by a yes or no vote to appoint him to the planning commission, conducted by fellow councillors and colleagues. While you sometimes have to cast uncomfortable votes, the timing of this one seems especially tough. Here's what I suggest. Let Mayor Wong, let Mayor, let Pro Tem Wong enjoy his last meeting. Table the vote on the planning commission appointments. During council comments, have a discussion about reopening the application process with the intent to expand the pool of applicants before a decision is made. I have heard suggestions that incentives might be in order. The final reflection I hope you'll have is how to elevate your view on this situation beyond the six people who you have worked with over the last two years and to the thirty thousand who you represent in our fair city, because through no fault of your own, as you work to improve our recruitment process, there are some unexpected optics involved here. As we watch what's happening at the national level, I encourage you to keep Lafayette on the straight and narrow by voting tonight to table the planning commission appointments and reopening the process to expand the applicant pool to tap into more of our community. The planning commission is the second most important board in the city. In the near future, I think the community deserves to see a reassessment of how and when the appointments happen, so we and future councillors are not faced with the uncomfortable situation we see tonight. If you decide to move forward with the vote, I still hope you will keep these thoughts in mind. To those three of you who are leaving, I wish you good luck in your new ventures, even if they involve being a couch potato on Tuesday nights. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Frank Phillips.
Good evening, Frank Phillips, Lafayette. Mayor Mangat, councillors. I actually have the same subject in mind tonight, but maybe with some different conclusions. First off, my mental agreement that maybe we need to take a look at the process for boards and commissions, but most importantly, the commissions, particularly the planning commission, because it does not seem that the recruiting process currently works. I was one of the people manning the planning commission table at the last recruitment event, and there were very few people at the event, and none of them came to the planning commission table. So I don't know whether it's a time-of-year issue, maybe you need to look at that, or maybe do it more frequently. I know you don't want to, but that may be the solution. Maybe a mentoring process of some sort, because it's a big jump to get on the planning commission without any maybe prior city experience, and maybe some folks are going, well, you know, maybe I could use some help before I get on, that might be an opportunity. So getting on to what was mentioned earlier as the main event of the night. Council was aware that there were very few applicants before the deadline closed, and procedurally, that would have been a better time to extend the deadline. Not wait till you have people who apply, who applied on time, and my understanding is both being highly qualified, to now turn around and say, no, well, we're just going to open it up again because we want more candidates, is, in my opinion, highly disrespectful to those folks. I think the least you can do is honor them with a vote and let them know where they stand. So hopefully, you will, you will take that advice. Also, too, you know, having things like this happen potentially can discourage future applicants, and don't want to do that either, obviously, with the shortage that we have now potentially. Finally, I'd like to congratulate Mayor Pro Tem Brian Wong on, on his ascension to real life, and also to the other folks who are leaving. Good luck and have fun. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Vicki Eulen.
Hi, I'm Vicki Eulen, three oh three West Sampson Street, and it is a trifecta. I too want to talk about the planning commission appointments. I attended the planning commission interviews and the follow-up meeting with the councillors last week, so I heard all of the discussions, and I support what councillors Friedland and Barnes discussed in those meetings, which is opening up the application process to encourage more applications for the two vacancies. This is not unprecedented. I remember in two thousand and sixteen, Mayor Berg extended the application period for the planning commission because there weren't enough applicants. This resulted in five applications for one open P C seat, with that seat being vacant for a month while the application period was extended. During this last round of P C interviews, Councillor Gallegos said she was concerned about there being temporary vacancies on planning commission if council doesn't vote during this meeting to fill those seats. But that already happened in two thousand and sixteen with no disruption to planning commission quorums and processes. It's not unusual at all for P C to not have all seven members present at a meeting. In fact, I've seen at least a dozen meetings over the last decade when there were only four members present. Another point I want to make is that this is no offense, a lame-duck council that would be voting tonight to appoint commissioners to four-year terms. If you extend the application period, the new council would appoint the commissioners they will be working with for the next two years, and I think that's important. And it also avoids the bad optics of an entire council who has worked with one of the applicants the last two years, voting on whether that applicant should serve on the planning commission. Going back to the time in two thousand and sixteen when the P C application period was extended, one of the things Mayor Berg asked for was robust publicity from the city's communications department about the opportunity to apply for P C. I think that's what's needed this time around as well, using a variety of communication channels, including ones the city doesn't traditionally use. I remember when City Manager Dowling presented the idea of having an open house and standardized boards and commissions application process to this council at your orientation workshop, workshop almost two years ago. I liked the idea then, and I still like it, but after seeing it in practice, I think it could use a little tweaking. Because I work in communications, I pay particular attention to how the city handles that, and I can say I saw way more in communications from the city promoting ballot issue two C than I saw publicizing the boards and commissions' open house and application process. In fact, I can't even tell you the date of that last open house, that's how little information I saw. In general, I think there needs to be much more publicity from the city about the application period, including what the boards and commissions do. How about if we give each board and commission a chance to highlight their accomplishments during the last year in the newsletter that goes out with the water bills? What if the city's comms staff did short profiles of individual boards and commission members, which could then make serving on a board and commission feel personal rather than bureaucratic? We have a great opportunity to examine this as we hire a new comms director. Regarding planning commission specifically, because this is such an important city entity, I wonder about incentives like payment. I brought this up to previous councils, and I hope the four current councillors who serve on the upcoming council, who will serve on the upcoming council, will consider this. The planning commission has as many scheduled regular meetings as council does every month, and yet, unlike council, they don't receive any compensation. Maybe it's time to consider changing that. In the meantime, I agree with what Karen said about tabling the P C votes on your agenda tonight in order to encourage a more robust application process that's free of any perceived ethical conflicts and gives council the opportunity to choose from multiple candidates for each vacancy. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Ron Spalding.
Good evening, Mayor and Councillor. Ron Spalding, thirteen twenty-six, El Dorado Way, Lafayette, Colorado. Couple things, start off easy. One, I wanted staff to know in the council, the holiday lights look tremendous, beautiful job, City Hall outline, the trees are going, stands out. The plaza with all the balls and all really looks good, number one. Number two, I want to congratulate Brian Wong personally for your time on the city council and for the planning commission, and they'll get a nice proclamation a little bit, you know, like really, Brian, we haven't agreed on everything, but I really appreciate your hard work. Thirdly, you're, you're going to be talking about the council appointments for the boards, commissions, and all. If I did my homework right, there are nine boards of commission, thirty physicians, and thirty-three applicants. I'm blown away and amazed by the applications that you all received. I've reviewed every one of those applications. They're unbelievable. The people that, that have submitted, very educated, M S degrees, PhD scientists, very experienced in their work, and very thoughtful in, in why they want to be on the commissions. And I'm so proud to live in Lafayette, you never know who's in town. These people are unbelievable, so, you know, if they're here, God, man almighty, I'm just blown away, and we're going to have great committees. I think two of them might not be filled, maybe they are. The Human Rights Board, there were six vacancies, we only had four applicants to there, and Sustainability, we had five openings, only four applied, so if, that's three people that, you know, maybe they'll apply for planning commission. But that brings me to the last point, and about the planning commission, and I guess I'm the odd man out, defer to my esteemed colleagues here and back. I'm really torn on this thing, and I'm even not sure right now, and you all have a big, a big task in front of you. I, as you know, I'm the gadfly, I've, since I've been here fourteen years, I religiously attend the council meetings, the planning commission meetings, and Urban Renewal, now Development Authority. Council doesn't attend the planning commission meetings. To cut to the chase, tough decision. I attended both the interview process. I agreed with Councilwoman Gallegos that they're both highly qualified to be, be appointed. I agreed with Councillor Friedlander, he said they were very qualified and had concerns about, about Brian being on there. And I had concerns at first, too, but then, when I've seen what happened with our lawyer, it's okay to appoint Brian, okay? And then I agreed with Councillor Barnes, you know, have a more robust thing, and just like our colleague just said. And I was going to say, you know, this, this I think is the toughest committee to be on. Maybe that's why we didn't get any people there, because it's, it's really tough. But if you opened it up, we had ten people apply for city council, six aren't there. I know one of the council people expressed, I'm talking to express an interest in being on the planning commission, here's a chance. Some of the people that didn't make the committees, two of them or three of them, that could be a whole group of nine people. But my concern with that, I have no problem, I have no problem with reappointing Bill Watson or Brian Wong. One little concern I have coming up, if you did open up, if nobody, if nobody appoints, you know, it's a roll of dice, ah, what happens? If you have a whole bunch of them come in, that's great. I think personally, attending all the meetings, or, you know, eighty percent of them, Mr. Watson is a highly qualified, we have a continuity, Mr. Wong, in the past, has been on the commission, he's been a, a, you know, a chairperson of that committee, both highly qualified. I'm concerned with the annexations coming up with, with two eighty-seven, with the, with the ranch, and with the gateway, and possibly with the, the one over by, you know, ninety-five and all coming up. I'm looking for people that have had a continuity, have had a history with the planning commission, that knows the ins and outs, somebody coming in, a new, learning the whole job, whatever you do, I'm okay with. But I think the ones we have in there now are great, and if you decide to reopen, I hope that Mr. Watson and Mr. Wong would reapply. They may not. If me, I'd feel slighted, I'd say to hell with it. But whatever you do, it's your decision, I agree with it, we got two good people there, I didn't get paid for this. I did not get paid for this, so God bless you and your decision.
All right, thank you, Mr. Spalding, and that's all the applause, please. All right, next up, Grant Swift.
Good evening, Grant Swift, six oh eight East Geneseal Street. I'm here tonight to not talk about boards and commissions. I'm here to talk about a commission and a board. As Historic Preservation Chair, we had an interview process and nominated Jeffrey Rogers, and during the discussion, our group was very enthusiastic about him. Members pointed out that he came to the August recruitment process and had a lengthy discussion with members there, and later on, as we ended our discussion about him, someone said, you know, if he's not appointed, none of us belong on this board. All right, as your LoSaB chair, we are tickled pink that Brett reapplied. He is a fabulous contributor to our board, knows a ton about small mammals, and we're just so thrilled that he's there. And then, secondly, we're looking forward to working with Judy. Thank you very much. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Next up, we have Frank Archuleta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm here basically this evening to run across three things. First of all, I want to appreciate you all, J D, Brian, and Nicole, for all your dedication, your hard work, and your services to the city of Lafayette. Even though sometimes you disagree with our perspectives, we are true historians, and basically, everything that we have told you throughout the past is nothing but the truth. From all the data, all the research, it's all true. I want you to realize that. I don't know, you're supposed to receive this from Doug here in your packet here, but basically, I want to go across a correction here. The sign currently marked at the southwest corner of the cemetery is incorrect. It says nineteen eighty-one. That is a typo, but it should say eighteen ninety-two. The numbers got crossed up there. It's not nineteen eighty-one, it's supposed to be eighteen ninety-one. It's just a typo on Doug's part, that's all, nothing more. I'd like to speak basically about the cemetery here a little bit. I had several conversations with Monty Stevenson and Dan Finn prior about the Potter Shield area, and what the process was as far as burying people there that were already buried there and digging up the babies there. And they knew, they admitted that, they knew what the process was. We went to the Human Right Commission, and they sent a letter to Monty Stevenson asking to close that Potter Shield area down, and also to come up with a historical plaque with all the names that are in that area right there. Unfortunately, here, I had a conversation with Melissa, and I took her up to the cemetery, and now she's in charge of the cemetery, also Parks and Rec. We walked the grounds and all that, and the reason I did that, because they had two more burial sites that was exposed. It just happened to be those burial sites in that Potter Shield area was the Martinez family, six of them were burned up in a fire in nineteen thirty in Frederick, and they're buried there. I asked Melissa basically to ask whoever dug them up, did they hit a coffin? And absolutely did, did. They hit the coffin that was there. So now, basically, now you're going to the SWCA Environmental Consultants, and I've been up there for two days with, and Rogers up there, going over the cemetery and all that. I know it's a tough decision and all that, but yous are going to be making decisions here, a resolution, basically, number twenty, twenty-five seventy-seven, imposing a moratorium on interments at the Lafayette Cemetery. Unfortunately, there's over a hundred letters that went out, but we have burial plots of that cemetery, that's sacred ground. We do not want to be buried in Louisville. We do not want to be buried in Louisville. We've had them plus for the nineties, in the nineties and all that. There's been an awful lot of hardship in that cemetery, and it's been because of the clerks and the Hennings. It's been going on too long. The information, the data is over a hundred thirty-three years, the information that we provide to use from nineteen oh one to nineteen fifty-two, where the two hundred names came up, out of newspapers, the Catholic Archdiocese, the Catholic Church. All factual, folks. What happened here in the city of Lafayette, racism, discrimination, bottom line, bottom And now, basically, yous are moving forward to try to get this under control, but we get asked for this underground radar system years back, and nothing happened until Melissa was at the cemetery and said, yes, they did hit that grave site where the six Martinis were buried, and that's why yous are at where you're at right now. Martineuses were buried, and that's why yous are at where you're at right now. That's exactly what happened. But we tried to prevent all this, and for whatever reason, through these years, yous didn't pay attention that much, or you didn't listen. I thank you very much, and, uh, once again, JD, thank you for your service, Brian and Nicole, even though we never agreed on a lot of things, but yet, I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, thank you. All right, uh, next up, we have Thomas Glenn.
Good evening, I'm Thomas Glenn, 745 South Vermont Drive, Lafayette. I wanted to bring to the attention that the formal objection process for, uh, or formal objection period for the, uh, Rocky Mountain Airport flight plans is now started as of November 10th. So effectively, we have 60 days to object to the, the flight plans that the FAA has put down as far as having the flights coming down through Lafayette along the 287 corridor, as well as the other sections of town, uh, as they're returning back to the Rocky Mountain Airport. So I wanted to make sure that everybody's aware of that, so that plans and processes can get in play to, uh, effectively address what's going on. I live near 287 today, this morning, I'm sitting outside, I'm getting an aircraft going overhead right over my house every one to three minutes. It's basically a deterioration of the quality of life of Lafayette, not just for my neighborhood, but everything along the corridor of 287 and other parts of Lafayette. So I highly encourage that actions get in motion, get the objections in place, and that way, we can try to prevent some of this deterioration of the quality of life in Lafayette. It's affecting our children, it's affecting our diverse, uh, population of citizens, it's affecting wildlife, which I've talked about before, where I had a eagle on a pole, power pole with a plane going right overhead. I appreciate your time, and if I can give assistance in that process, please let me know.
Of course.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, uh, next up, we have Ken Andrews.
Good evening all, Ken Andrews, 1655 Wanaka Lake Trail. I too would like to thank JD and councilors, all of you, uh, and especially those that are leaving. This is the third time that I've come to the council meeting to speak about neighborhood street safety in Wanaka Landing. Uh, I'm getting a little tired, no doubt you are too, um, but during this transition period of councilors coming and going and so on, I don't want council to lose sight of what really is a bit of an Achilles heel for Lafayette. Uh, Wanaka Landing is surrounded by arterial routes, 95th, baseline, South Boulder, uh, and further down 287, but it butts up to Wanaka Lake Park. And, uh, as you've heard me say before, basically, there is no disincentive in Wanaka Landing not to speed. There are no speed signs, there are no raised crosswalks, no speed cushions, and it's a bit of a free-for-all. And it is because there are a lot of destinations that can be got to through Wanaka Landing, and it's also being used as a shortcut avenue rather than going around baseline 95th, 287, and so on. So I'm not gonna go through all of the points that I've made before and others have made, but do really want to keep that on your radar screen. Um, this is not gonna take another bond issue. Yeah, congratulations on the ones that you got. It's a very, very low-cost solution. It costs under $2,000 to put a speed cushion in and things like that. So I understand that JD has sent to you our priority action items, is that correct, JD? You've sent this to council? And I also want to specifically highlight JD's participation and responsiveness. JD has been very accessible to us, and, um, we really appreciate that, we really appreciate that. I, I'm here not just, uh, representing myself, but I'm here particularly representing the 26 children that, under the age of 10, that live within a few hundred yards of my wife's and my house. JD got to meet, meet some of those and their parents recently. Um, that, these little kids, um, they wanna ride their bikes, they wanna cross the street, go to their neighbor's house, and they also catch, many of them catch the school bus on Pascal, which is by a crosswalk, that is pretty lethal, to be honest. I can't remember how many times I've seen near misses, I have people telling me every week about near misses, and it, it's just not a safe environment. Lafayette's a great place to live, but we need to have better street safety where we live. So I just appealed to you with that, and as I say, I'm not gonna prattle on anymore about it, but, uh, we do want to pick this up with you, councilors, and I guess, new mayor, wherever you are in, in the room. Um, and, you know, we, we really want to just do some basic, low-cost improvements to make Wanaka Landing safe, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Michael Johan, and Michael, please correct me if I'm mispronouncing your last name.
It's good enough. My name's Michael Johan, I live at 1600 Wanaka Lake Trail, and I'm here, uh, on Ken's invitation. Ken talked about the safety and the speeding and things like that. I want to talk about the parking issue that has come about with the pickleball court located at the park. I live right at the corner of Karia and Wanaka Lake Trail, so I'm right there, I look at it every day. When that court is full, which is often, and whether, however you feel about pickleball in the city or not, the asset that has been brought to the park, the pickleball court, has brought consequences. Along with the speeding is the parking issues. Uh, when that court is full and people park on both sides of Wanaka Lake Trail as it goes up the hill or down the hill, uh, it's a extremely dangerous situation. I come home to my house multiple times a day, and when you drive down that hill and people are parked on the inside corner, it is impossible to see around that corner. There are people that get in and out of their cars, the pickleball players with their gear, they're standing there, they're yapping how good the game was, whatever they were doing, it's a really dangerous situation. It's a city asset. Good or bad, it's there, but consequences have come from it. Along with the speeding, the traffic is, has really increased. I saw it tremendously, there has been a crew replacing the water line at our intersection for the last three weeks. The amount of traffic that passes through this intersection is huge, and without the city doing something, it just creates a huge liability. And for us residents, it, you know, I listen to all the people, there's some bigger issues on the table, you know, planning commission, you know, the, the noise, this is a neighborhood issue. It's about safety, it's about taking responsibility for what we have. A simple thing is that inside corner, if it was striped and signed, "No Parking," a person can see. I can't tell you how many times I've come down the hill and somebody's coming up and saying, "Oh my God, where are we?" Uh, I ask you to seriously consider what we have there. As Ken said, some of the fixes are incredibly inexpensive, and I would believe that a city like Lafayette, I don't know the inner workings, um, would have this, you know, discretionary funds to support neighborhood safety. We're one small neighborhood in a city that's growing, but we are a crossroads, and we just need attention. So I thank you for your time, and Mayor JD, thank you for putting so much time and spending with us, helping us understand how to move this forward, and good luck in your next adventure.
Yes, of course, thank you. All right, um, so I'm not seeing any more speaker forms in front of me at the moment. Are there any members of the public that we should speak during this time? Okay, uh, let me check online as well. I do see a, one caller. Caller, uh, with the phone number ending in 757. Talking is now permitted, and, uh, you may speak when you're ready.
Hello?
Yes, hi there.
I'm, my name is Christopher, I live at the Luluna Co-op, Lafayette, and I wish to, uh, put my thoughts behind Thomas Glenn and what he said. We need to really control these planes, that, that, they're, they're becoming not just an annoyance, they're becoming a, a, a direct disturbance to my peace of mind. It's, it's, we need to do something with it. We really need to get, I know people have the right to fly, but, yeah, I'm just here to say that, and that's it, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, all right, well, that, uh, wraps up our online callers as well as our in-person speakers, so with that, I will close public input, and we will move forward with the consent agenda. Uh, we have several items, including, uh, item A, November 3rd, 2025, City Council 50 Minutes, item B, Second Reading of Ordinance Number 23, Series 2025, Amending Section 26-16-4 of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Sketch Plan and Preliminary Plan Review Procedures, item C, Second Review of Ordinance Number 24, Series 2025, granting, uh, electric easements and a utility easement, uh, to the Public Service Company of Colorado for electric utility and service lines and electric vehicle charging stations on city, on certain city-owned properties. Item D, Second Reading of Ordinance Number 25, Series 2025, Enacting Chapter 4 pertaining to the Setting of Fees and Amending and Repealing Provisions in the Code of Ordinances Regarding Fees Set by Resolution. Item E, Resolution Number 2025-75, Approving the 2026 Mental Health and Human Services Grant Program Disbursements and Authorizing City Manager to Execute Grant Agreements with Recipients. Item F, Resolution Number 2025-76, Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement Between the City of Lafayette and Boulder Valley School District Regarding the Student One Initiative. Item G, Resolution Number 2025-78, Approving an Amendment to the 21st Interim Agreement with the Northern Integrated Supply Project Water Activity Enterprise for Participation in the Northern Integrated Supply Project, and finally, item H, Contract with Second Amendment to City, to City Manager Employment Agreement. Council, like to pull any items?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull item H, the City Manager's Contract.
Great, any other items? Okay, uh, can I get a motion to approve, or actually, let's, I'll pause on that, let's address item H first. Mayor Portemonge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I wanted to do was just take a moment and, um, make some comments in regards to the City Manager's review that we had gone through. While most of this is done as a personnel matter in executive session, um, this is a public matter when it comes to council taking a vote on it, so I just want to take a quick moment, um, and acknowledge the work that City Administrator, or City Manager, Doling had done in the last year, and how much we appreciate the work that you have done. She did get a, a good review, I think, um, and just so the public knows, we have chosen to give her a 3.5% increase based on the average of all city staff, and then on top of that, when we look at the current market of all city, um, managers with our city, our size, there's also gonna be a 4% market adjustment. So that is what, um, City Council has chosen to do, and I just wanted to go ahead and daylight that for the public. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, um, can we get a motion, um, for item H separately?
I move to approve item H, the City Manager's Contract.
Second. Motion and second on that, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed, and, uh, so that passes unanimously. I think Councilor Barnes was actually, did not participate in that vote, just for the record. All right, is there a motion to approve the balance?
I move to approve the balance of the agenda.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that passes unanimously. Great, okay, uh, that brings us to proclamations for tonight. Uh, we have several proclamations, um, to get to. Let's start, but with proclamation I, this is for Transgender Day of Remembrance for November 20th, 2025, and I believe Councilor Barnes...
I'd be happy to take it.
Yes. Yeah, um, Councilor Barnes was supposed to read this in, but he's in the back, so. And then, once we're done reading this through, I'd be happy to invite you all to speak.
Transgender Day of Remembrance, November 20th, 2025. Whereas transgender day of remembrance was started in 1999 by transgender advocate Gwendolyn Ann Smith as a vigil to honor the memory of Rita Hester, a transgender woman who was killed in 1998, and whereas the city of Lafayette is committed to honoring the dignity, identities, and lived experiences of all members of our community, and whereas the city of Lafayette is committed to trans and non-binary people and their health, well-being, livelihood, and we thank them for being a part of our community, and whereas transgender and non-binary individuals continue to face disproportionate levels of discrimination, bias, and violence that endanger their safety and well-being, and whereas the city of Lafayette supports fair and equal treatment of all people regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, and whereas transgender day of remembrance honors the memory of people who have lost their lives through acts of anti-transgender violence, now therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Lafayette, Colorado, do hereby declare November 20th, 2025 to be transgender day of remembrance, encourage all residents to join in recognizing this day by commemorating those we have lost and reaffirming our shared commitment to inclusion, equity, and compassion. So moved.
Second.
All right, we do have a motion and a second. Uh, before we get to the, the vote, I'd like to invite, um, a couple folks that are here to speak to this proclamation, uh, from the Rocky Mountain Equality Organization, this is Mark, Mark and Theodore, uh, thanks for joining us tonight.
Yeah, thank you for having us. Uh, I'm Mark, this is Theo, yeah, we're from Rocky Mountain Equality. Um, I'm from Boulder, and I just, and we work in Boulder County and throughout the state of Colorado on programming, on advocacy, and services for the LGBT+ community, including transgender individuals, and, um, I want to take my moment to just thank the, the city council for taking a moment to commemorate this day, it's really important to our community, um, especially now. So with that, I'll let Theo explain a bit more about what Trans Day of Remembrance means.
So Trans Day of Remembrance is a time to remember and honor trans lives lost this year due to violence. While is it a time to grieve, it is not just a day for despair, it is also a time to recognize the value of our lives, particularly so right now, when there are some who would attempt dehumanize and systemically erase us. I grew up not that far away in Greeley, and it was a long time before I even knew the word "trans." Um, here, I'm grateful to now get to be my full, authentic self, as well as a part of a strong trans community. I hope that as we grieve those we lost this year, we can continue supporting tribes, trans lives now and in the future. Thank you.
Of course, and thank you for, for joining us, and Steve. All right, um, so there has been a motion and a second, any comments or discussion on this proclamation? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed, that passes unanimously. And I do believe we do have a signed copy of the proclamation, do I have it? Oh, I do have it, um, just want, if you want to come up, um, uh, just for your, your copy as well, if you'd like to keep this, and then we have, um, one on our, for our records as well.
Awesome, thank you very much, and, um, if you want to, if you get a picture with, uh...
Sure, 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 I'd be happy to do that.
If you guys hold that and I can take the picture.
Yeah, yeah, no worries, if you guys would like to join. Yeah, it's up to you, yeah, if you all want to come with us, too, sure.
Have fun.
Got a good proof? For 15 minutes?
Yeah.
I had a few things to add. Uh, do you want me to...
Uh, that would be great, thank you.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much.
Of course, you can bring a little one.
Oh, yeah, here. Thanks. All right, here it goes.
Okay, um, onward with proclamations. Um, our next proclamation is item J, this is for Small Business Saturday for November 29th, 2025, Council of Tapi Vega.
Uh, thank you. Whereas Lafayette's progress has been driven by entrepreneurs who are innovative, risk-takers, and determined, and whereas, from the storefronts that anchor Old Town to the companies driving innovation, small businesses are the backbone of the community, and whereas, small businesses comprise 99.7% of all...
And whereas, small businesses comprise 99.7 of all firms in the United States totaling 34.7 million small businesses and employ 45.9% of the private sector workforce in the United States. And whereas, 68 cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the U.S. stays in the local community, and every dollar spent at a small business creates an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas, Lafayette's businesses contribute to the vibrancy and character of this community, keep money in the local economy, create jobs, offer important and essential services, and employ a diverse workforce. And whereas, Lafayette City Council honors and celebrates the spirit of local entrepreneurs and their success stories, and reaffirms the city's commitment to helping small businesses thrive and prosper. And whereas, advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, the Mayor and City Council of the City of Lafayette, Colorado, do hereby declare November 29th, 2025 as Small Business Saturday and encourage all residents to support small businesses on this day and throughout the year. We also encourage residents to visit the city's website at www.lafayetteco.gov/shopsmall to view a list of local businesses providing special offers for customers on November 29th. So...
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on that proclamation. Any comments or discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That proclamation passes unanimously. All right, final proclamation for tonight is Item K. This is honoring Mayor Pro Tem Brian Wong's service for the Lafayette City Council. Counselor Gallegos.
Whereas, following nearly eight years of service on the Planning Commission, Brian Wong was elected to Lafayette City Council for a two-year term in 2019 and re-elected to a four-year term in 2021. And whereas, Counselor Wong was selected to serve as Mayor Pro Tem in 2021 and again in 2023. And whereas, throughout his tenure, Mayor Pro Tem Wong served as liaison to several city boards and committees, the city's Audit Committee, the Chamber of Commerce, and a number of regional boards, including the Consortium of Cities, Denver Regional Council of Government, and Northwest Mayors and Commissioners Coalition. And whereas, during his time on city council, Mayor Pro Tem Wong has been involved in several transformative projects, including the Willoughby Corner Affordable Housing Project, the adoption of the city's Economic Development and Housing Strategic Plan, the passage of a dedicated sales and use tax to expand public safety services for Lafayette residents, the completion of key infrastructure improvement projects, the establishment of a new downtown development authority, and the passage of a capital bond to invest in municipal facilities benefiting all residents. And whereas, Mayor Pro Tem Wong has always demonstrated thoughtful decision-making for all residents, business owners, and visitors of Lafayette. And whereas, the City of Lafayette and its residents will reap the benefits of Mayor Pro Tem Wong's dedicated service for decades to come. Now therefore acknowledging that this is the final meeting he will be attending for his term ending December 2nd, 2025, the Mayor and City Council of the City of Lafayette, Colorado, do commend and honor Mayor Pro Tem Brian Wong for his dedicated service to the Lafayette City Council and community. So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on that proclamation. Any comments or discussion on this? It's a little weird because we're doing, today's your last meeting, but normally we save all the sad words and the happy memories for December 2nd. But I guess today or right now would be appropriate. Anyone like to say anything?
Be happy to.
Of course, Counselor Friedland.
Brian, I think we, I don't know if we first met when this happened, but we certainly had coffee when I was running. You offered that, and I really appreciated it. And we talked about how we were policy wonks, and we wanted to talk about policy, and it was going to be exciting if I made it on council so we could, we could talk policy. I think we've, we've had a few good policy debates. And so I just appreciated that outreach and that opportunity and support, and have enjoyed working with you, and really have appreciated those times when we've gotten into the policy details. So thanks very much, and thanks very much for your impressive service. Really do appreciate your, your commitment to this community.
Thank you. Thank you. Other counselors? Counselor Gallegos?
I just wanted to say thank you. I'll never forget how, two years ago, around this time, right after the 2023 election, you were one of the first people to reach out to me and congratulate me. And being the stubborn person I am, I said, "No, not yet. Let's talk in a couple of weeks." But you insisted that I was okay, and even before I was formally sworn in, you also made sure I was included in a lot of processes as well. So I remember when we were interviewing for the city manager position, you made sure that my input was also included. So thank you so much for always making me feel welcome.
Thank you. Other folks on council? Counselor Tapia Vega?
Yeah, so just Brian, thank you. Thank you for all your service. Planning Commission, all the, so much, so many years for the City of Lafayette. Just thank you for that. Yeah, same as Counselor Gallegos. I got to, I got to know you really two years ago. And it was interesting over these last two years how much, I learned from everybody on this council. I learned so much just in every meeting. But with you, it's funny, because we always see things on like the opposite side. I'm always on the other side of things with you, but we were able to, like Counselor Friedland said, kind of come to find some common ground or debate on some sort of policy and kind of understand each other at the end of the day. And, you know, things like sitting together in the gallery of the U.S. Senate, because we were there lobbying our congressional members for the City of Lafayette are memories that definitely won't be forgotten. So thank you for, for the last, for the last years with me, but for all the years you've served our city. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Others on council, if you'd like?
Thank you. Sorry, I had to step out for a second. I'm glad I didn't miss this part. And I, I just have to say that serving with you for the last three years has been, or no, six years. Yeah, it's been six years.
Fast six years.
A fast six years, and Brian and I have had a lot of conversations and talks and disagreements, but I really appreciate what we've said is that it's okay to disagree, but you have to keep talking. And I think that's, that for us has happened multiple times, and I really appreciate your professionalism, your history, your knowledge. You know, we had to go through COVID together. That was something I don't want to do anymore. I don't want to do again. So I appreciate trying, making that journey with you and having all of the conversations and wish you the best moving forward. I, I do think that what you've contributed will, you know, leave a, leave a legacy. So thank you for serving with me. I'm honored to have done so. Thank you.
And so I'll, I'll wrap it up by sort of saying, you know, for me, I think a lot of people misunderstand how we as council members see issues and ideas, because oftentimes you're only seeing a short snippet of a few seconds or a few minutes on our thoughts on issues. However, it's rare when folks get the opportunity to, you know, or reach out to us and say, "Hey, let's have dinner. Let's sit down. Let's talk for an hour. Let's really dig through your thoughts and minds on whatever issue it may be." And one thing I really appreciate about Brian, your service, is that you are always willing to take that time and sit down for an hour or two and talk, and really hash out all the details on, on my thoughts on things, because I feel like there's this perception that you and I are like, 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 we go hand in hand, like whatever I say, you, you say, we support each other on almost everything, and that's actually not true at all. Brian and I have disagreed many times, and we get on the phone, and sometimes I let him win. But, and other times, you know, he provides a very different perspective, you know, like he, oh, we are, we are, our political ideology is different. We value different things, or we prioritize things in different order, and ultimately you're still willing to have disagreement and still be like friends at the end of the day. And I think that's, you know, as we, as we reflect and think about our time on council and what we leave behind, I think one thing that I hope, the message that we put across is that you can disagree, still be friends and supportive of each other, and without any like negativity, animosity, hatred, or sneaky, you know, political agendas that people have and trying to maneuver situations to benefit themselves rather than what the greater good of the community is. And I think we're, we've, we've tried to leave that message behind. And I, and I support, and you, and I'll, I'll say, you were the, the first person in the city that really encouraged me to step up and run for leadership position. And if it wasn't for your, you thought, you thought about me running for mayor before I did. You, you, you told me that, you know, you, what you saw in me and had the potential to be in this position, and I'm being genuine, and I'll say this about you two later, on December 2nd, I would not be in my position without you and your support. And like full-on, just endorse me. And that did a lot for, you know, my self-confidence to be like, you know what, maybe I should go for it. And that would not have happened without you. And so thank you for shaping me into being a better leader. Thank you for criticizing me. Thank you for being there as a support system when I need it. Thank you for, for being such a great, you know, partner in this job. I'm so happy to see that you are continuing to get involved regionally and nationally, supporting the AAPI community, gathering elected officials from all over the state to meet and discuss shared issues. You've done a lot of work with business, the business community in the chamber here in Lafayette. And so you're not just on council to be a city counselor, attend the meetings, go home and move on. You're really spending the time growing our community and expanding it statewide and nationally. So thank you for everything. I know we still have lots more to discuss tonight. I'm sad you won't be at the December 2nd meeting, but it truly has been a pleasure and an honor to serve with you.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, we have, we do have a motion and a second, I believe, correct? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That passes unanimously. Helen, we do have a plaque and engraving for you. It just didn't arrive on time. You'll get one. December 2nd.
No worries.
Great. All right, well, that brings us to presentations for tonight. We have one presentation, Item L, Parks, Recreation, and Golf Fee Philosophy Update. We have our Community Services Director here.
That's right. That was hard to follow. We wanted to provide an update to council and the community on a project that we have been working on since the beginning of summer. Maybe. Joining me tonight is Justin Perdue, our Deputy Director of Recreation; Dennis Warrington, our Parks, Open Space, and Golf Deputy Director; and Kara Skinner, who is our consulting partner with MGT Solutions. We'll provide a reminder of the components of the project. I'm going to talk about the highlights of the community engagement component of that project, and then Justin's going to talk about the fee philosophy that has been developed out of this project. So as a reminder, there were many components of this project, one of which was community engagement. We were also looking for the very first time at a comprehensive analysis of what it costs us to provide the services and programs that we do. It also included a component that is a benchmark analysis, looking at similar fees charged in neighboring agencies. We looked at categorizing our services as part of that analysis and developing a philosophy that would guide our approach to setting, setting those fees and looking at city investment in different programs. And the outcome of that will be a fee policy and then a model that staff will use in fee setting in the future. So to talk about the community engagement that was fairly robust, we had a project webpage on Lafayette Listens, and that is still online. MGT conducted a survey online that was available in English and Spanish that ran from July to August. And we had quite a number of respondents, 625. The majority of those were English speakers, but we did have some Spanish-speaking respondents. Additionally, MGT conducted focus groups, five different virtual focus groups with Lafayette residents to better understand their priorities for recreation and get some insights into their thoughts and perceptions around parks, recreation, and golf fees. Additionally, they conducted virtual interviews with Lafayette staff from Community Services Department, but also internal services like finance, city administration, arts and cultural resources that we partner closely with to get their input. So highlights of that engagement, we heard that people do believe that the fees charged should reflect the value, their perceived value of the facilities and the services. We heard fairly consistently that the Indian Peaks Golf Course, while it may be perceived as on the higher end of pricing, the public perceives it as a higher-end course. It's in good condition, and they felt the fees there are appropriate. On the flip side, we heard from folks that the relatively low price of our recreation programs may reflect the quality of some of our facilities, like the rec center. We heard from folks that if, if prices go up, they would like to see improvements to those facilities. We heard quite a bit from folks about the way that they're able to make payment and register for our programs. They're interested in different, different options for memberships or passes. They don't want to see a one-size-fits-all. They want to see options that are right fit for their, their household or their family. We heard a lot that they would like to see improvements in our mobile and online payment options. In some cases, there are some services where folks do have to come to a city facility in person to register for, and folks would like to see some improvement just in the convenience of our, of our mobile pay and registration options. And they reported interest and support for differentiated pricing. So there was broad support for higher rates for non-residents, pricing by household or family, but we did receive mixed, mixed feedback on age-based pricing, so perhaps reduced rates for children, teens, or older adults. Folks were mixed on whether or not we should consider that. We heard loud and clear from folks that affordability is very, very important. People told us that our programs and facilities are generally more reasonably priced than those at similar public facilities in our neighboring communities, and the preliminary results of that market analysis that MGT has been helping us with does reflect that. Our prices are generally lower than peers for similar programs, and in some cases significantly lower. Respondents told us that affordability, they're concerned that affordability to programs could be a barrier to access for families or with, you know, lots of family members or lower-income residents, and we especially heard about this around the access to the Great Outdoors Water Park. As we might expect, residents value the sense of community and belonging that they feel when they visit our recreation facilities and when they visit parks. They want to preserve that Lafayette feel. They want to be able to see their neighbors and connect with folks at our facilities. They value and expect that all members of the community are included in, in these public facilities. We did hear, though, that some folks felt that the Indian Peaks Golf Course does not feel as accessible to the public as other facilities do, and that there are perceptions of exclusivity around the golf course. We did not anticipate hearing about communication or marketing or sharing information with residents about our programs, but we heard quite a bit. We heard that folks feel like maybe a lack of knowledge about the facilities and the offerings and the programs available are a barrier to their participation. They had recommendations for improvements to our website, to marketing, including some great ideas around additional engagement with the community. around additional engagement with the community around the golf course to help address those perceptions of exclusivity. So while folks maybe felt that, they also had some constructive suggestions for how we might improve those perceptions. And they also suggested we provide easier access to information about our current reduced-rate program. So we do have a reduced-rate program for income-qualified residents, but folks didn't always know that that was something that was available to them. So that is something that we heard and can incorporate. So Justin's going to talk a bit about the cost-recovery fee philosophy that was developed through this process based on our need to recover costs for providing these services and also what we hear from the community. Our approach is going to strike a balance between recovering those costs and minimizing financial barriers to access for folks. And our city's level of investment in programs will be based on annual budgets, what's available, and then the general level of community benefit that each program or service provides. Hand it to Justin.
Thanks, Melissa. May Council, pleasure to be here. As Melissa stated, I'm Justin Perdue, Deputy Director for Recreation. So, I'll continue on with the presentation, and we want to dig into that approach to fee setting. So as you can see outlined on the slide, we're looking at a cost-of-service accounting model. And what we're really talking about here is breaking down our programs and operations into like-service categories and understanding their true costs. This will help us really assess that fee structure and what is needed and how it fits into the cost-recovery continuum that you've seen in the memorandum and that you'll see later in the presentation. We certainly will be classifying those services along a spectrum, again, later in the presentation, but really centered around what is a community benefit. And those benchmarking comparisons that were mentioned, we will do those on an ongoing basis. Those have been done historically and will continue to do so. We like to keep a really close pulse on what other organizations with similar facilities and spaces are doing as well. And that's both locally, regionally, statewide, and nationally. Expanding on the differential pricing, we have historically prioritized resident rates, them being 20 to 25% below what non-residents are. And so, we're just committed to maintaining that and expanding it in a couple areas, making sure that it is consistent across the board with resident and non-resident pricing. And truly, it will really help us ensure we're providing as affordable access, equitable access to our residents as possible, and we have the ability to really diversify our offerings and services. To expand on service categories, as you can see outlined here, common good services. We're looking at accessible benefits to all of the community and providing that holistic value. You can see some examples outlined just below that definition. And then on the flip side, the individual benefit services, really looking at almost what the privatized industry can provide, so generally benefiting the individual as opposed to that community. Definitely, prime examples include personal training, private events that may be held in a space, something that may be akin to a hotel providing or somewhere of similar size and scope. So now, I'd like to really pull out the continuum for you, and I'll just go ahead and read that for the benefit of everybody who might be watching or listening. But common good versus exclusive, all the way from open-access activities being that first service category, community events, drop-in activities, education and enrichment activities, beginner and introductory-level activities, special events, rentals, advanced-level activities, competitive-level activities, personalized services, enterprise operations, and then lastly, resales. So you can see there is quite the continuum. We can certainly provide examples as well if you would like for that to be expanded upon. But there is still work left to do, we are not wrapped up quite yet. We're working closely with MGT to refine the analysis in their models to understand what those true costs are that I mentioned, as well as how our revenue helps offset the city's investment through our expenditures. This will allow us to use that model beyond the fee study. So at that culmination, we're looking to phase in the implementation, and that will involve staff training and really digging in deep as we move forward on an ongoing basis. Another item of note is certainly the evaluation of our reduced-rate program analysis. And looking at that program, see if its current structure is really right-sized for us or if that needs a little bit of refinement as well. So with that, we welcome any questions you may have.
Of course, thank you so much. Questions from council? Councilor Gallegos.
Thank you for putting that together, and I just have one question regarding differential pricing and if you have any plans to institute it at the water park in the future?
So, there is differential pricing in existence at the water park, but we certainly need to dig a little bit deeper into it. So the resident/non-resident piece, like I spoke about, that being consistent, is that what you're referring to?
Right now, it's just one price, and as someone who has a lot of kids, I have four kids. It's actually less money for me to take all of my kids to the Brimfield Bay as a non-resident. So that's something to keep in mind.
Absolutely, and that's where I mean that being consistent in that resident and non-resident approach, but there's still some differential pricing, and I want to clarify with that age demographic difference.
Right.
So there is that piece, but we need to be more consistent in modeling that.
Other questions? Councilor Freedom?
Well, first of all, thank you, everybody in the team that's working on this. I think we're, you know, at least I know I'm very eager to get to the finish line here, so I appreciate the hard work. I do have a couple of questions and maybe, yeah, just want to know more. Tell me more about the cost-of-service model, the cost-recovery. What are the pieces that go into that model?
Well, it's definitely digging deep into what those costs are. I mean, that is one of the biggest things, and then really assigning them to what your revenue centers are so that we can look at what the city's investment versus the true costs are as well. So, we're looking at personnel, we're looking at supplies, equipment, any kind of service contracts that we may have, anything that is involved and related to indirect or direct cost.
Do we include, thank you for that answer. Do we include anything like annualized cost of replacement or something to say? We're looking, I kind of brought this up at the workshop, so hopefully it's not super out of left field, but, you know, we need to replace this thing in 20 years. We should make sure that our fees reflect the need in 20 years. As rough as that might be, right, we can't perfectly predict things, but I think especially when we see, right, the investments that we have to make every once in a while, which is, you know, it is what it is, it's expensive though, right? And we have these revenue-generating amenities that allow us to sort of help build that in. But is that part of the cost-recovery model? Do we take that into account?
Oh, absolutely. So depreciating assets is really what we're getting at, right? And deferred maintenance and things of that nature, that we understand that the cost of our assets increases as that lifespan increases as well. So, we have some internal strategies right now, but we do need to be a little bit more intentional in thinking forward and accounting for those depreciating assets over time and making sure they're accounted for in the budget so that they can be replaced and we don't have outdated, let's just say, a treadmill that really isn't working and is out of service constantly. Nobody likes seeing that, right?
Thank you so much for that answer, I really appreciate that. I also really appreciate the annual, sort of, the annual look back at, once we're up and running. I think, you know, that'll keep us, we'll get there and we'll stay on the top there. I think that's all my questions, thank you so much.
Thank you. Other, Councilor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. I just was wondering, have we worked with MGT before?
Can I recall? Yes, I'm hearing.
Okay. I was just wondering if they have experience, kind of knew a little bit about Lafayette's philosophies. Yes, or you had none, okay. Just, that's the only question I had, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay. I'll just kind of reiterate, what you already mentioned is the affordability piece is huge. I think our Rec Center is very affordable compared to some of our neighbors. And I know, you know, at the end of the day, as a government, we have to be fiscally responsible in how we approach these things. However, you know, we do have different demographics in our neighbors, aside from Longmont, I would say. You know, we have, we have community need. You know, I personally really benefited from those prices and those summers where I would spend every single day at the Rec Center, growing up here. And so, you know, all those things, all those programs like that we do have where we can work with lower-income communities to make sure they have access to our resources. Let's just continue, I know they exist because I've worked, you know, been with the city for a while now, that I know that the opportunities are there. I just want to make sure that the community is aware of them, and I think we should do our best to continue to push that information out as widely spread as possible so that folks know how to take advantage of those programs that we do have. That way, when prices are adjusted, they're still, we're still being equitable. And so, and I know that's already at the forefront of a lot of the conversations you are having, so I just wanted to reiterate that. And so, because this is a presentation, it doesn't seem like there are any more questions. So just want to say thank you and I know, I know I've already said this before, but welcome to the city and thank you so much for all the hard work you've been doing so far.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so that wraps up presentations for tonight, which brings us to regular business, beginning with item M. This is First Reading of Ordinance Number 26, Series 2025, Providing for Additional Appropriations During Fiscal Year 2025 for Unanticipated 2025 Revenues and Expenditures Required of the City of Lafayette, specifically regarding modification of current 2025 budget line items. We have our CFO here to get us started.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council, Heather Balsor, Chief Financial Officer. We're going to talk about the 2025 Budget Supplemental. This is first reading tonight, ordinance number 26, Series 2025. We'll be discussing the budget amendment overview, supplemental highlights, net impact by fund, and then taking any questions you may have, and then providing some motion language. So the amendments, this is the third of the year, could be revenues, new revenue sources, often associated with a specific expenditure or expenditures, which could be new or reallocated expenditure, also one-time or ongoing. So supplemental highlights, so from the expense side, we have in the General Fund an additional $83,000 for ground penetrating radar services. We have $1 million in the Post Fund for the 701 Park Design and Construction, and an additional $150,000 expense in the Insurance Fund. Additionally, those highlights, we have three transfers from Lura. One into the General Fund for $1 million for the Chase Bank purchase. A transfer from Lura for the 700, 800 Public Roads Streetscape Improvement Project. It's a million in revenue and then a million dollars in expense to complete that project in the Capital Projects Fund. And lastly, we have an additional transfer from Lura for the South Boulder Road Revitalization Program, additional 750 in revenue, and $750,000 expense, again, in the Capital Projects Fund to complete that project. So net impact by fund, overall, across all funds, we have a little, close to 3 million in expenses, 2.75 million in revenue for a net impact of 234,000. So happy to answer any questions, and we've got folks from Lura and other finance staff here as well.
Great.
You have any questions?
Yes, thank you for that. Questions from council?
We have a motion too.
Yeah, if there's a motion, it's ready.
Are you ready for it? I can take care of it. I move to approve a First Reading, Ordinance Number 26, Series 2025, Providing for Additional Appropriations During Fiscal Year 2025 for Unanticipated 2025 Revenues and Expenditures Required of the City of Lafayette, Colorado, specifically regarding modification of current 2025 budget line items.
Second.
All right, I motion in the second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next up on the regular business, item N, Resolution Number 202574, Establishing that the City of Lafayette intends to continue to utilize its existing permitting review process for electric vehicle charging system permits. We have our Planning and Building Director here to get us started.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council, thanks for having me tonight. In response to House Bill 241173, which relates to the permitting processes for EV charging stations, Lafayette needs to adopt a resolution that selects one of the three options outlined in this bill. So I'll have a staff presentation, an opportunity for council questions, and then a request for a motion. So House Bill 2471173, excuse me, seeks to encourage the adoption of EV vehicles by Colorado residents and to advance a network of EV charging stations and associated infrastructure. So the Colorado General Assembly identified these as matters of state local concerns, which the city agrees with. EV charging stations, then, based off the state, need to be streamlined by facilitating this process, this permitting process. But the bill, as staff interprets it, really appears to be geared towards municipalities that have not proactively addressed EV permitting, and it's written to ensure that processes are in place so that EV chargers are allowed and then also encouraged. As most of you probably know, Lafayette adopted EV regulations in 2022, so we're doing a lot of this already. And it's taken me a bit to kind of dive into all of this and then pull myself out of it. But I think maybe the easiest way to think about what this bill is trying to achieve, and it is really geared towards those municipalities that have not done anything, it'd be a lot easier to like adopt either one of the options that they allow and plug-and-play it than to try to marry that with what we've already kind of committed to. And we'll get into that through my presentation. But the options are generally outlined here. Option one is to adopt the Model EV Code that they have created. That EV code includes compliance with several prescribed criteria, criteria including when land use permitting can be required and when by right reviews need to be considered. Basically, what they're saying is that they don't want EV charging applications to have to go to planning commission and city council, they want an administrative review. That's already something that Lafayette's doing. Then they're also talking about kind of more specifics in terms of what we can and can and shouldn't do, which is like double-county parking spaces. So if you had to provide additional EV parking spaces above the parking minimums, then that's what's discouraged. And then they try to limit what you can actually like apply criteria-wise, which are like screening requirements and setback limitations. So that's what option one is kind of getting at. And then option two is more streamlined, it applies to Section 3, that's actually straight from the House Bill, and it really tries to get cities to adopt like a checklist of what you have to submit and then a process by which we go through that checklist and review applications according to the checklist. But one of the key things to kind of understand throughout is that this is for EV-only applications versus we, you guys see a lot of these things, so I don't want to confuse the fact, and I don't want the public to be confused by the fact that we talk about EV chargers when we have a commercial or industrial new developments, or if we have a significant redevelopment. It's the actual applications that are triggering those reviews. And then because of our requirements, which we adopted in 2022, they have to provide EV charging space. So what this bill is doing is just getting to a permitting process. It's not requiring that people actually deliver them. Lafayette's kind of far out ahead of all of this by actually requiring new development and significant redevelopment to actually provide EV charging stations. So we'll get into that a little bit further in a second here too. But some of the key things that we're already doing that this bill is trying to achieve is administrative reviews for EV-only permits. That's already being done, so the applications that Lizzie has just kind of gotten through in coordination with Excel, you're not going to see. We're going to process those as building permits through our building code, which, and then the streamlined review process, I think, is already in place. We really require three application components for an EV-only permit, and that's the application form, that's the electrical design, so the EV charger design, and then a site plan to kind of show where it is and the implications of citing it where they're suggesting to cite it. And then just, I've already kind of clarified this, but EV permits are done through the building code, and either one of the two options that are outlined would transfer that over the land use code. Building code is required because of that electrical review, so we basically Uh, building code is required because of that electrical review, so we'd basically be creating a two-step process where we currently have a one-step process. And then, again, uh, EV regulations that are geared towards EV-only permits are pretty rare. In the last four years since we adopted, uh, the code, we've had two applications, one for Walmart, uh, and one for Kohl's. Walmart's the only one that actually followed through and installed EV chargers, um, and that was because Electrify America was the applicant on that one. Um, and then obviously the, uh, ones that, uh, Lizzie recently coordinated, um, for city facilities. Uh, but we've gotten far more, uh, EV chargers, um, delivered through our requirements. And recent examples include Colita Grill, Trade Space, Sugarloaf, uh, the restaurants at two-ten North Public, Daily Grains, Vasa, Kinder Care, and Carl's Jr., and that's only been in the last year. So what you guys did, uh, in twenty-two-two is far more effective, uh, than what's being kind of considered, uh, by the state now. And I think it's a reaction to other municipalities that aren't as committed to achieving these goals. So hopefully that's an easy thing to kind of, uh, understand, but I'm here for any questions you might have.
Of course, yes, thank you so much for that presentation. Uh, questions from council?
Um, I want to say thank you for coming to the Sustainability Resiliency Advisory Board meeting, um, this month and having this conversation with them. I know there was, you know, very varied opinions on that board about it, and I think they really benefited from hearing from you and, um, being able to ask you questions and talk through it a little bit, um, so I just really appreciate that. I did note that in, I think, in the bill language, there's a certain time we have to provide a report.
Yeah, we still have to do that, and we still will do that. Yeah, I think it's, the first one is March of next year, and then there's another one in twenty-two-seven, but that, we have to do kind of regardless.
Awesome.
I think the question then would be like, what report are we giving them? Because it's, what we'd be getting through, what they're intending to do is probably far less. It'd be like the four versus the couple dozen that we're actually getting by.
Right.
Requirements, so, and that's what's tricky too with like the timeframe for the reviews is we can't really quantify, like, our land use reviews that go to, like, are part of a bigger application. Um, we, we kind of hone all of that in, and I, I think that's the other benefit to this, a lot of those criteria are, like, you need to, this is how you need to look at it and, and basically kind of your steps and what you can and can't do. It's, it's almost as if it's kind of trying to control jurisdictions that may not want them. And we are, you guys kind of set the path for us, we know that they're wanted here, we're not trying to create obstacles. So that's what a lot of that, that bill is trying to do, so, in my interpretation of it.
I think one of the things that I thought was very compelling in the sustainability and resiliency advisory board conversation, and in the comments that we've received from two of those members, is, you know, the check, right, of like, are we meeting our goals? You know, I, I'll, I trust you a hundred percent on what process is best, and I think having that, if the report's the right time, I'm not sure, you know, whatever, but I, I do think saying, okay, they're trying to get us to a certain point where there's good support with charging in our community to allow for increased EV adoption, right? Are we meeting that goal or not? Regardless of the process to get there, right, but like, are we meeting it there and gives us a chance to say, maybe this isn't the best process, or maybe it is, right? Um, so that would be my kind of question or comment back would be, um, would just love, you know, an opportunity sometime in the future to say, let's just check, like, how are we doing? Are we doing pretty well? And especially with, I totally hear you on, we got a bunch of level twos installed, I think that's what's required in our code is, you know, some level of probably level twos. I don't see that many level threes in our community. Walmart's a great setup, that's, it's super fast, we've got a couple, we're getting more, which is awesome. But like, to me, that's a, what does our community need in terms of the level of charging in the right places? And are we getting there or not, and are, have we developed the framework to sort of allow us to get there? Um, obviously the market's going to have to deliver it for us, um, so we don't have complete control unless we go and get rebates and grants from the state, um, or from our utility, but, um, I would really appreciate that in the future of just, let's check and make sure, are we meeting what they're trying to go and what we as a council pushed for in twenty-two-two?
Okay, yeah, and I think that we could have that conversation through the building code update too, which is coming next year, so.
Yeah.
Because that's where all of these regulations lie, and then we do need to probably like, it wouldn't have been easy for me to tell you an exact number.
Sure.
Because we don't track it, right, we, they kind of get aggregated as part of the whole review, and, but we can start tracking that better so that when we have these opportunities and when we report back to the state, we know that, you know, and, and that's the other kind of trick is like, Carl's Jr. just put one in because they're through construction. Vasa is in the process of, uh, installing theirs, and that one, like, I think that one's kind of the unique example of a redevelopment that's not, not new. But because of how expensive, like, and, and how much was invested in that, they triggered needing those upgrades per our code requirements as well, so those are coming soon too, so, uh, but.
Thank you.
When they're built versus when they're required and then like, you know, is, is two different things too, so.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, uh, other questions? Uh, oh, did you have something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did anyone else have questions?
As of now, I don't think so.
Okay, cool, yeah, I've got a few questions. Um, so this one's interesting to me, uh, for a few different reasons, uh, but, but I have some questions, I just want to clarify, I want to make sure I understand it fully. Uh, can you, you can do high level, you don't have to get into the weeds.
Yeah.
But can you explain, uh, the difference between and why we would want to keep it in the building code versus the land use code?
So the, the main thing, I mean, I, it's working, right, for one, but, um, the building code, a, a building review is required because of the electrical review that is done for any kind of these installations. And, and, and I should have included that too, it's, it's a point that I want to make is that this is what's tricky with any of the state regulations is like, if we didn't have anything done, this would be helpful because it would kickstart us down that road, but because we've actually started on this and been doing it already, like, trying to right-size what they're asking us to do with what we're already doing is probably a much bigger lift than just adopting the model code or the HB, um, option that, that is outlined for us. So, um, we're going to make some changes to our land use code, and I think the most obvious ones that kind of, we need definitions, so putting them in there. One of the things that they contemplate that really doesn't happen is like, a primary use for EV chargers, and that would be kind of like the equivalent of a solar farm where a property is just EV chargers, that has not happened so far, so getting out in front of that in case it ever, if the finances are there for that ever to occur, where would we want that to happen? Probably not in a residential district, probably in a commercial or industrial district, but you know, those are the kind of things that the land use code, um, is better to address than the building code, but the building code, um, I mean, it captures everything, like, and then it doesn't add another, so the, it, it is, in my mind, a little counterintuitive to put it in the land use code when you want it to be streamlined because if you're going to do a by right development, like, a building code is the quickest path to that review without layering in additional planning review, which also typically requires an additional fee, so. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, I have a quick follow-up to that, it's because we are updating the code right now, right? It's in the, it's in the drafting process, was this considered, was it considered moving it over, did we look at the, the possible option of doing so?
Not really, no, and it's because, I mean, we're responding to this because the state's asking us to. Like, if, if this was coming from applicants that are saying that our process is broken, I think we'd have looked at it a lot harder. But we have not had that feedback, and honestly, like, the feedback we're getting is, is about like, the, the expense of our regulations and how, like, difficult some of that is for, you know, smaller businesses and, uh, that type of thing. Because there is an expense to it and I, and we try to push them to grants that are available, and I don't know how long those are going to be, uh, in place, so that's kind of the evolving, uh, circumstances with anything related to electrical or, um, you know, it's worked so far, but it's a lot been based off of state and federal, uh, grant money available, so.
Got it, another question, one of the components of the bill, especially if we are to take this path forward, is, uh, the, the reports that we have to give back to the states of twenty-two-six and then twenty-two-seven.
Yeah.
One of the things that I, I'm really interested in twenty-two-seven, we'd have to report back kind of the timeframe, the timeline of what, of a lot of these applications. Do we have that number for today, so if we were to average out the applicants that we have now, what is the, what is the turnaround for our city for these permits?
So the last one we did was in twenty, uh, twenty-two, that was the Walmart one, that's the only one we really have. The, even like, it kind of gets muddled, um, so Kevin, our chief building official, estimated two weeks for this type of permit, but that's because you have to, like, generally have to bring in a new, uh, transformer, and so like, you have to work with Excel. And we don't do anything in two or three days when we have to work with Excel, that's just how things are, so. Um, and sometimes they put that, like, on the building, and sometimes it's standalone, and sometimes that impacts landscaping and some, like, the Walmart one, I think, they lost three parking spaces just for their infrastructure, and then the chargers themselves were basically a, you know, uh, the, the same amount of parking spaces, they just put them in between spaces, so. It wasn't a significant, but like, that one, because Walmart has so much parking, doesn't really have an impact, but on a different side, it could. So those are the things that just require more review, but primarily the electrical and Excel piece. And we don't want to have, uh, this, the circumstance with, I, I think a lot of people come to us before they've talked to Excel and kind of got that all coordinated, and then they submit something, and then we work with them, so if we had a two-to-three-day turnaround and we had to hit that requirement in order to be compliant, we'd probably also be denying applications, which is not customer service friendly and not really something we want to back ourselves into, so.
I read that, I just want to make sure that, that's, that's correct, so our, our main pushback on the three-day timeline is because we won't have the ability to actually get it done, so we'd be declining a lot of applications, is that, is that what you're hearing?
That's, that's part of it, yeah, and I just don't think it's a realistic expectation from what we, but we don't have a lot of data. Like, honestly, we have, I don't know, we didn't track, like, the review timeframes for the Kohl's application or Walmart when they were four years old. So, um, I think, I mean, we also, the only other, like, context that we have for that, I think, is that we're going to have additional staffing. So part of it is just like staffing, right, like, we have a certain, I mean, we're never not busy, so like, to drop everything, uh, because we had an EV permit come in, and we may have other priorities, I mean, we might be able to do it, and then like, the, the new staff, uh, member that we're getting through that grant is going to be dedicated to EVPV, so our capacity could change. And any, if anything, it should be going in the right direction so that it's not two weeks, hopefully it's closer to a week, but I don't know that two or three days in coordinating things with Excel easements and that kind of thing, um, is really that realistic.
Amazing, I appreciate the answers, I know these are hard questions.
No, no, no.
Um, I sensed a lot of hesitation just from reading the memo for one specific piece, which I actually love, which would be kind of a checklist, right?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I sensed hesitation that our city doesn't have one, and I feel like maybe we're kind of gearing towards not having one. What do I, what do I feel there, what's the pushback, because if I'm looking at it from the outside, I feel like that's something we should have.
It's one of our marks, we don't have checklist for our other applications, so just, I mean, we can do that, that's not a heavy lift, but the list would be, like I said, it would be application form, it would be electrical design, which is a pretty involved design, so like, whether or not you just say that that's it, or you have to go into all the detail, like, that's like a twenty-page document of how, how those things work. And that's pretty standard for anybody that has to do this on a day-to-day basis, and then the last thing is a site plan, tell us where it's going to be located. So it's a pretty, it's, we could do it, it's not a heavy lift, but I don't know how much benefit. Like, we haven't heard that from applicants, that they're confused about the application process or anything like that, it really is just the, the time and coordinating of the reviews and the referral agency like an Excel. So it requires public works time, it requires building time, it requires planning time, and it requires at least one, the electrical provider, so.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
No worries. Counselor Lawrence?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Counselor Topia Vega brought up two questions for me. Um, number one, just to, I understand, we are looking to bring this into the land use code, or we're not?
We are looking not, we're not looking to, we would look to supplement, like, because the land use cap hasn't been updated since the twenty-two building regulations, we'd be looking to appropriately update the land use code with very strategic and limited things, but we wouldn't want to be moving this over, it would only be like, you know, like, we want to build in an allowance for parking spaces to be reduced and not have to trigger another site plan review because they said they were going to provide, you know, the bare minimum, like, whatever. So if we're, if, if, and that's more council direction, right, like, and that's why through the land use code, we're going to daylight that to you, and if you agree, and we still have the support for EV chargers, that's the direction we'll head. But it'll have, I mean, anything's kind of a trade-off, like, we'll either have a little bit less parking or a little bit less landscaping, but it's, you know, but, uh, right now, the way our code reads, it's not very flexible, so we'll be, we'll build in that flexibility.
Uh, the other question was, I, I heard heavy, like, this is us trying to do a report out as a heavier, heavier lift than just adopting what they said, is that?
No, that, that's not what I, the, the report on the actual number of chargers that we've, we've created through our regulations is the report that is, that we haven't been tracking. So like, that would be a heavy lift, but that's different than adopting this or not adopting this.
Oh, okay, so the heavy lift of finding the numbers to put in the report.
Heavier, yeah, and then I, what I did want to clarify and, and before this might, I might not be answering your question this directly, is it, this is certainly like, adopting what the state has given us is very easy for a jurisdiction that's done nothing, but it would be much, it would be a bigger lift for us to actually marry what they've asked us to do with our building code regulations. And it would actually create more process, which isn't really the intent of the goal, the code either. I think it really is for those jurisdictions that haven't done anything, here's a playbook to operate by, and then, like, there is, there is like the, uh, how would I say this? Uh, the desire, like, if there was consistency throughout the state, sure, it would be easier for everybody, but there's not going to be consistency throughout the state. We have, like, we've heard more about other jurisdictions opting out to like, out of this, like we're planning on doing than we have about people that are opting in.
Okay, I, I was just asking about staff time to do the report, it's not, by heavy lift, it's not an excessive amount of time to.
Oh, no, we'll, we'll get it done, yeah, yeah, I mean, we, we just, now that we know that there's a target, we'll start tracking it.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I think I answered a lot more than you were, you were in before.
Appreciate the, the context. That's all, yeah.
Thank you, um, any, any other questions? Okay, well, um, staff has presented, um, some options in front of us, um, so I'd like to open it up to discussion now, um, see where members of council are, if they're interested in following staff's recommendation, or, or the other options that are available to us. I'll get your thoughts before we take a motion. How would we like to proceed? Oh, sorry, I can't understand.
This makes a lot of sense to me that we follow what's in here, it doesn't make sense to me to go backwards and make something harder for businesses to put in EV charging stations. And this seems to work not only with this, but also the grants out there that would help expand the EV charging stations.
Okay, thank you. Um, other folks on council?
Yeah, I'm in agreement, I mean, I think you heard my comments, um, already a little bit of just, you know, I just want to check our assumptions, you know, at a certain point. Are we actually meeting the goals and are we, are we fostering an environment that is, um, supporting EV charging in our community? You know, and how we get there, I, I don't, I don't really care that much as long as we hit the goal. And so I, I will defer to the experts on how we get there, and so I think it's a fine recommendation.
Okay. Anyone else?
Um, yeah, so, um, I'm okay with the recommendation, ultimately there are things that I, I talked about them tonight, I think, could, could change and stream. I'm always in favor of streamlining things, so that's the one thing for me, I also want to hit goals, but really streamlining the process and maybe making it easier for anyone to, to come here and do what they want to do, which we obviously were, we want EVs, we want to make sure it's easy for them to, to have these. But, you know, I, I understand the recommendation from staff, and I, I'm in favor.
Great, anyone else?
I'm also in agreement with staff's recommendation, and I want to keep the existing permitting process.
Okay, well, seems like if someone feels ready to.
I move to approve resolution number twenty-two-five-dash-seventy-four, establishing that the city of Lafayette intends to continue to utilize its existing permitting review process for electric vehicle charging system permits.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, um, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, none opposed, passes unanimously. Okay, uh, well, that brings us to our final item under regular business for tonight, item O. This is, um, a resolution for a number twenty-two-five-dash-seventy-seven, imposing a moratorium on interments at the Lafayette Cemetery. I have our deputy city manager here to get the conversation started.
Okay, Mayor and City Council, we have for you this evening a moratorium on interments at the Lafayette Cemetery. And I'm going to give you a little bit of background on this matter, and the purpose of the resolution, we'll have some time for questions, and then I'll provide motion language. So as you're aware, the city of Lafayette owns two cemeteries. Um, the two cemeteries are the Lafayette Cemetery, that's the historic cemetery that's located at one-eleven East Baseline Road. On the map here, that's in the northern, north-eastern portion of the city of Lafayette. And the second cemetery is the Cole Creek Cemetery, which is at seventeen forty-two Empire Road. So this is actually just outside Lafayette in Louisville, next to the Louisville Cemetery. And it's where that blue dot is on the kind of southern portion of this map. A little bit of history, the city of Lafayette Cemetery, which is the cemetery we're primarily going to talk about this evening, was deeded to the city of Lafayette in 1891. It is a historic cemetery predating that time. It includes a Potter's Field. So this is a portion of the cemetery that includes unmarked and unidentified grave sites from over a century ago. Throughout the course of the span of this cemetery, it has varied ownership. Obviously before the city took it on, the Potter's Field existed and management varied over the course of this time. So during the city's duration of oversight and management, there were various times when the city had mortuaries that took on the role of, of owning some of the sites and actually selling sites. Meanwhile, the city was also selling sites and selling plots at the, at the cemetery at the same time and throughout the course of time. And then the city continued to sell plots and discontinued selling plots at the cemetery in the early 2000s. There have been ongoing concerns, which you've heard about definitely over the course of the last couple of years regarding the completeness and the accuracy of the cemetery records. So we have been aware of some of the issues with the cemetery records and with the conditions at the cemetery for the past, you know, over the course of the past several months. And we've been taking actions for the last year or so to kind of address some of these issues. We've purchased new software. It was in the budget for this year and the new software implementation's underway. And this is going to improve access to information, both for patrons of the cemeteries and also for staff to have access to the data and the records. We are just initiating a cemetery survey that's underway to augment and confirm the existing maps and the records that we have and the data of the cemetery records. We're also working with necessary partners. Internally, we have a team of folks who work on cemetery issues, including the city clerk and then the parks team as well and our communications team. And we're also working externally with a cemetery consulting group that has been helping us and is going to start helping us with the management of the cemetery onsite and is also helping us with this moratorium matter as well. And then we've been working with the office of the state archaeologist on the issues that we've been facing at the cemetery as well. In red, you can see the moratorium on interments. That's what we're talking about this, this evening. This pertains to coffin burials only, and this is to protect the existing burial sites at the cemetery. And this is requiring some outreach to plot owners. As you are aware, that we have a number of people who do own plots at the Lafayette Cemetery and so that have been, have not been used or accessed. And so we want to protect the existing burial sites at the cemetery. And so we are conducting outreach. And you know, this is a difficult, some difficult conversations with people who have purchased sites and may not have access to those sites in the way that they anticipated that they would, particularly during the course of the moratorium, when they can't access the site for a coffin interment. So we're having conversations with them so they understand what their options are during that time. And we are continuing to maintain visitor access at the cemetery during both the surveying that's happening and during the, the moratorium. So this resolution for a moratorium will effectuate the moratorium on interments for coffin burials only. It will still allow for the burial of cremains during this time in those plots. The options that it provides for current plot owners, should they need access to their plot, would be for cremains burial on their existing plot. They could, if they wanted to have a coffin burial, transfer that plot ownership to the Coal Creek Cemetery to a plot. Or they could refund their plot, the plot purchase for what the current cost of a plot is. The way the resolution and the moratorium are set up is that it allows for the city manager exception if that were to become available or necessary based on any particular site. Happy to answer any questions. And we also have a resolution. I'm sorry, we have motion language for the resolution.
All right. Well, thank you for that presentation. Questions from council. Counselor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. Clarification allows for city manager exception if necessary or available. What does that mean?
So we are, we're conducting research and data at the site actively and we don't know what the findings of that are going to be. And so that's a process that again, you know, we don't have any data back from that. We don't anticipate we will for another probably eight weeks. We'll know more about the status of the cemetery and the status of the moratorium once that data comes in. So we don't know what the duration of the moratorium will be and what the closure will be. We don't know what the next steps will be following, you know, the moratorium. If for some reason we're at the tail end, something should happen, a burial comes in and we, and we have data at that time that says that we might have a site that that person owns that is clear and we could potentially, we could have the flexibility to make a decision. The city manager could have the flexibility, but we just don't know what the circumstances might look like. So we, this leaves, you know, some options open depending what data, you know, we might find as this evolves.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Other questions? Okay. If not, we'll take a motion, please.
I move to approve resolution number 2025-77 imposing a moratorium on interments at the Lafayette Cemetery.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just a quick comment. I just want to thank staff for putting this together. I know that the cemetery has been a hot topic for the last couple of years, but I think that we are taking the steps that we need to, to ensure that we do what's right by the, by the individuals that are in that cemetery. So I appreciate staff's work. I know it's a very sensitive topic and I'm, I am very supportive of the fact that we were bringing in an outside company to help manage the cemetery, something that normally is not within the scope of city services. So just want to acknowledge that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Well, that wraps up regular business, which brings us to council appointments. We have this, two items under this, beginning with item P. This is board commission and committee appointments for terms beginning December 1st, 2025. And the planning commission discussion will occur after that under item Q.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm here to discuss the board commission and committee appointments for terms beginning December 1st of this year. I'll walk through a bit of background in our process for this recruitment, outline some of the next steps for the appointed board and commission members, and then turn it over for consideration of motion language. As a reminder, we transitioned to a semi annual recruitment process wherein we do the primary or the larger recruitment in the fall. So this was our second fall recruitment process. And the purpose of doing this was really to improve some efficiencies, align not only the terms, but also the recruitment and coordination outreach efforts, improve some governance and kind of consistency in the terms on the boards, as well as provide more consistent training and onboarding for the new board and commission members. And so this year's process followed the exact same cadence we, we used last year wherein the applications were opened the last Monday of August. So that was August 25th of this year and for almost a month through September 19th. And then that first week of the applications being opened, we held a recruitment open house at Bobberter Recreation Center. And then the boards and commissions individually took the month of October to review the applications, interview the applicants as necessary, and then ultimately recommend appointments for your consideration that are being presented this evening. As you heard, any appointments made tonight, those terms will begin December 1st and then we'll wrap up this annual cycle with a year-end celebration on the 4th of December. Just to summarize some of the outreach, outreach we did for this recruitment process, we had a mix of in-person engagement, both promotion at the tail end art night out and the open house I mentioned. We had some printed materials such as the newsletter, a number of digital methods such as our news flashes on our city calendar. We had social media posts. And then there were also some targeted outreach opportunities. Some boards have lists of previous applicants, for example, that are, these are promoted to those previous applicants. Others have dedicated social media channels through which they can share these openings. So those targeted options were used where available. In terms of the applications we received, so there are nine boards and commissions under consideration for this agenda item. And the table is organized to show the number of vacancies or anticipated openings as terms are ending, the number of applicants for those openings, and then finally the number of recommended appointments. So you'll see here, the majority of the boards and commissions will have the same number of recommended appointments as vacancies or upcoming openings. Before I turn it over for questions and a motion, I just want to summarize some of the next steps. So as mentioned for the, to wrap up this annual cycle, we'll do our year end appreciation event on Thursday, December 4th. And then we also have the training for new members. And so this is a kind of replication of what we did last year and it's to provide a more consistent training for all of the new members. It's the same training offered two times to meet available, to offer availability for these participants. And we cover some fundamental topics such as open meetings law, cora, open records, the roles of staff and council liaisons, things like that. And then I mentioned a semi annual process. So we will plan on doing our spring recruitment to fill any vacancies that come up between now and then, as well as any of the seats that weren't filled through this fall recruitment process. So that'll kick off in March. So there's some motion language for your consideration on the screen here. This is a long motion because it's one motion that would appoint all of the recommended applicants in the packet. There is a second slide that has some different motion language if there are any amendments you would like to make to the recommendations in the packet. But at this time, we'll turn it over for any questions. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Questions from council? Counselor Sampson?
I have a question for the rest of council. Had, since we are all liaisons to a board or commission, have any of us heard from our, from those boards and commissions that we're liaisoned to that they had any concerns or did they, are they in full support of what's on here? I mean, you heard tonight, I'm, I'm liaison to the Historic Preservation Commission. We had our chair here say they were very happy with who they, who they are hoping to get appointed.
I'll say I'm the advisor to the older adults advisory board, and I think they're very excited to have Bob back on. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I think for open space, you heard from the chair.
Yep.
Same chair, I think. And I think open space is, is good. I mean, they have qual, really qualified people on there. Certainly, I mean, you know, you looked there and it was two people that are already on. Well, one person that's already on that did it and the one new person. So STRAB's a little different. I don't know if, I mean, there's a lot of people, I think, that have been there for a little while that were not term limited, that didn't come back.
Oh.
A few, a few. And so I do think maybe they had just concerns around, they didn't want to do it anymore. You know, for whatever reason. And so I think you look at the numbers for them and that's part of it is like five vacancies is just a lot of vacancies.
Yeah.
And hard to fill that many, especially if you don't have like a full complement of folks kind of returning on that are throwing their name in in addition to the new people. So I'm not sure, you know, different, different answers for different boards.
Okay. Thank you.
I forgot Karen Williams. Sorry, Karen. Bob and Karen, they're, they're excited to have them back on the older adults advisory board.
For Karen.
I know. What? Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or further discussion? All right. Well, there's a motion if someone would like to.
Thank you. I move to appoint members to the cultural arts board, historic preservation commission, human rights board, library board, mental health and human services grant program advisory committee, older adults advisory board, open space advisory board, public art committee, and sustainability and resilience advisory board as presented in tonight's meeting packet.
Second. All right. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to our next item for tonight under council appointments. This is item Q. Planning commission appointments for terms beginning December 1st, 2025. There is no staff presentation for this because this is a council appointment. We did have a subcommittee that met to meet, to interview candidates and review applications that consisted of Counselor Friedland, Counselor Gallegos, for a short time, Counselor Tapia Vega, and then Counselor Barnes. So it's really up to us to have a discussion. I actually want to turn it over to Mayor Protem Wong actually to get us started.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, so I think that this is probably the most interesting item of the evening as since there's so many of us still here this evening to watch it. But what I think that my time on council, I have always stood for equity. I have always stood for when we define a process that we should follow that process. So what I would like to do right now is to make a motion that the city council appoint Bill Watson to an opening on the planning commission because Mr. Watson did follow the rules. And I do have the ability, since it is not about my position, to go ahead and make that, that, make that motion and that nomination. So I would like to go ahead and move that council approves Bill Watson for planning commission.
Okay. There is a motion. You guys are going to really test, test my Robert's rules and all this. We do have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Now let's open it up to discussion. From others or thoughts, if there is any.
So I'm confused. I thought we have a resolution for both people.
I believe, yes, we do. And I, and I believe Mayor Protem Wong is hoping to separate the two.
I am.
I know. And then you called me, Mayor, and asked, and I told you, if we wanted to do this, we needed to have the staff do two different resolutions. I said, ask them to do that so that we could do this according to Mayor Protem's statement of let's do it on the process. But I feel like we're, we're not doing the process. We're breaking the process. If there has to be a resolution to this, I feel, I feel like we're not following process.
So I, I think the way it was published and the way it was intended is to do both. Since it sounds like Mayor Protem Wong would like to separate the two. So that's, that's just what's happening.
Mayor Maughey, if I could have the city attorney jump in?
Yes, please. Yes.
Thank you. So these will be two motions, one motion for each vacancy so that Mayor Protem Wong can, has made this motion, could vote on the first one. And then my understanding is that he would recuse himself from the second motion. Does that help?
Yeah, I believe that's.
But still one resolution.
There's no resolution associated with this agenda item, I think is what the confusion is. It's two motion items. Correct. Just like the last item for other boards and commissions, just by motion.
Okay. Just yes. All right. So there has been a motion and there has been a second to that motion. So now we're in the middle, so still have a discussion going because I feel like folks have stuff they'd like to add to this conversation.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the committee because in the past, the process has been the committee speaks.
Yes.
This committee of three speaks. And then we start the discussion.
And the reason I made the motion was because in consultation with the city attorney, it, it may go into conversations that would then impact and into the potential impartiality or that I would get into the topic of further conversation in which I would recuse myself, I would be recusing myself, which I am going to when it comes to my nomination. But I did want to participate in this. So on the advice of city attorney, McSawka, this is why it was separated. When in conversation yesterday, she called me to outline what the process was and I suggested this process. Just to be clear transparency, why, why this was done, why I'm doing what I'm doing.
Okay. So let's like, do other members of council, would you like to speak to this motion? If not, we can vote on. Go ahead, Counselor Friedland.
I thought it was, you know, along the lines of what Protem Wong said and along the lines of public comment that we heard from. from Commissioner Phillips. You know, I, I think, you know, we have an applicant who was fair in the process, who submitted, and we need to be sure to be fair to that applicant. So I'm supportive of the motion.
Okay. Other folks, would you like to speak to this motion? Counselor Gallegos?
So I participated in the interview process, and I thought Bill Watson was very qualified. I valued all of his answers during the interview. I scored him very highly, so I would like to move, move forward with that appointment.
Okay.
So I was also on the committee, and at the last moment, maybe that's the greatest choice. So, but I do think if one of my colleagues on the committee would like to second it, then we can vote for that. So I'm just.
So there has been a motion and a second already. So now it's just a discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm a, if we went above that, it's fine with me.
Okay. Would anyone else like to add to the conversation? Otherwise, go ahead.
I'll just say, the one thing we always talk about, especially with boards and commissions, is institutional knowledge. And I think Bill shows that he's been on the commission. He, of course, has incredible application from everything I hear. He, he's been amazing on the commission. So institutional knowledge is important to me, and I'm glad that we're separating them, so we can, we can vote and get ideally a very strong planning commission.
Okay. Counselor Sampson?
Yeah, so I still have more questions on this.
Of course, yeah.
So my understanding is we only really have two choices. We, we vote this either yes or no. There is no, because what I keep hearing from the public is things like, well, why aren't you going to open it up? And former mayor Christine Berg, open it up. Do we have to open, if we were to have that discussion later? Are we, are we able to open it up for everybody? Or, in other words, can you separate this? Can you vote for one and still open it up? Or do you have to open it up for both?
You can separate it. Right now, the motion that's on the table is to appoint Mr. Watson. So the next procedural step would be to take a vote on that. If it was not to pass, one of the options would be to reopen for that position. And then we have the second position, which also could be either voted on tonight or reopened.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So there is, just to follow procedure, there has been a motion, there has been a second. We're, we're at the point of discussion. I'm ready to call for a vote unless someone on council would like to continue the discussion. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, that motion passes six to one. And congratulations to Mr. Watson, on your appointment to the Planning Commission. All right, so continuing on to item Q, there is a second vacancy that we need to discuss. Mayor Protem Wong?
I will be recusing myself from this one, so I will step out of the chambers for this discussion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. So we, as, as, as we are all aware, Mayor Protem Wong has applied to be on the Planning Commission. There were several, a few members that are on, served on that committee to review applications and to interview those applicants. We did have two, just for folks in the public that don't have the full context or background to this discussion, we did have two applicants for two vacancies. And so I would actually just want to turn the discussion over to the committee members, councilors Gallegos, Barnes, and Friedland. You all had meetings and discussions, so I'm going to look to you all to, to share your recommendation on how the rest of council should proceed.
I guess I'll go first. So I voted, in, my advice was to not to appoint either of the candidates, as I felt like it was important to have a larger body of people participating. And I would like to move that we table the vote tonight, reopen the process, or vote to reopen the process, and I don't know if we can do that tonight, just so we have a larger body of applicants, including the applicants who have applied already. So that's what I feel like is the most important piece along, along the way.
Okay. So just, just to reiterate, you have, you, you, Counselor Barnes, are suggesting no appointment tonight, or postpone that appointment to a later date, so we can reopen the applications to get a more, you know, a robust pool of applicants.
Yes.
Great. Others on the committee?
You can go first.
No, please, I insist.
Okay. So I had recommended putting Mayor Protem Wong through to the next round, because it was found that he is eligible. He'll just have a later start date than the other candidates, once his council term is officially over. He interviewed extremely well, he has the institutional knowledge. He's seen Planning Commission from different perspectives, and I think that is an asset. So something in the conversation that we had a couple of weeks ago that stuck out to me was not marketed well. And I think we have a fantastic communications department. And I wanted to see for myself if it was not marketed well. So I went through every social media account and came up with a list of dates where this process was mentioned. So it was mentioned on Facebook and Instagram, on September 4th, September 16th, September 10th, August 28th, August 27th, August 26th, August 25th, posted to Nextdoor on August 25th. The open house took place on August 28th. Additionally, it went out in the Lafayette Connection in everyone's utility bill in multiple languages. And that was also available in paper at the Rec Center Library, Senior Center, City Hall, the collective, as well as posted on a community member's blog. So I'm not sure how we could have marketed this process better. But I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, and so just to clarify, Counselor Gallegos, you are seeking to reappoint, or not reappoint, to appoint Mayor Protem Wong to the Planning Commission?
That is correct.
Okay. Counselor Friedland?
So you can see my recommendation in the, in the, in the agenda, or in the, the agenda. So I do think that, you know, looking at our numbers across the board, there, there was something going different this year than last year, right? We had, I think, much different across all of the boards and commissions in terms of interest. And so I do think it's something we should probably discuss at the council retreat, about how do we continue to take another incremental step? We made some good changes, so. But I'm going to leave that aside, because I don't think it's really super relevant at this point. I do think the place that I have hesitation is appointing a sitting counselor to the Planning Commission of all bodies. You know, I think putting a sitting counselor on one of the other boards also feels a little bit odd, right? You know, like during their term, at the end of their term. But most of those boards are, you know, just really advisory in nature. They don't have a quasi-judicial responsibility in really important planning processes for our community. And so for this one, it does feel like this is a really high-profile and important one. And I fear that having us appoint somebody that was just on council, it has the perception of something just odd going on, in my view. And so I think we should try to avoid that as best we can. And so, you know, that's, that's really my hesitation, specifically for this appointment. Certainly qualified, has been chair of Planning Commission, had a great interview in agreement. I just think we need to, part of our role is to protect the, you know, the public perception of this body. And I think, you know, sort of having that sort of easy off-ramp, you know, is, it doesn't help our public perception. And so that's why I have hesitations. So I would be supportive of staying the decision and reopening for a new pool. Hopefully, we can get a, we can get a really competitive pool. I also thought, something that you mentioned, Counselor Barnes, during our deliberation, around, we need to do everything we can to like increase inclusivity and diversity on all of our boards and commissions, especially Planning Commission. And I, you know, quite frankly, I think, you know, I, I don't see that in this pool. And so, you know, I think having a conversation about that as well at the board, at the council retreat is really valuable. But I'll stop there to allow others to digest.
And just to clarify, you are agreeing with Counselor Barnes to reopen the applications? And I guess in this scenario, since we just made that appointment, it would be for one, one vacancy?
It would be for one vacancy.
Correct. All right. So we heard from the committee members. Do any of the other councilors want to share their thoughts on how to proceed?
So, I tend to go with, you know, we've, we have a group of three that went in and interviewed, and so I tend to lean with that a lot of the time. I'm going to talk a little bit about something that makes it even more complex. I do believe if the two council members that were candidates and ran received a donation from Brian Wong, that there is a conflict of interest for them to vote on this. And one of the things that I would say, because conflict of interest is basically you get something for something else, even though there's a quid pro quo that happens beforehand, we don't know, doesn't have to be said. That's one of, one of the things, if we're trying to be above board, and we're trying to be, remove all conflict, the best thing to do would be to move this, based on all the issues at hand, move this to a different date, move, open it up for a longer period, and allow for a greater group of applicants on this. I do, I will say, as somebody who sat on Planning Commission, it is a great stepping stone for going into city council. It is, as people said, they had eight meetings last year, but there is a lot of information that you go through. You've got to read through the code, and you've got to read through lots. I mean, we were talking about the plans, 20 pages long. That seems small to me in some cases. When you're going through everything and evaluating that, one of the things I remember when we were deciding to do this with the boards and commissions is, I remember someone on council asking, so Planning Commission's going to be in that same time and two? And my thought immediately was, ooh, I wonder if that's long enough? Because in my thought, if people are candidates for council and they aren't elected, that is a great thing for them to step into. Furthermore, I happen to agree with the thought that if the, the next council is the one that's going to be working more closely with the Planning Commission, the next council should be voting them in. But I do agree that there's a lot of thought to decide whether you're going to be on Planning Commission. One, I don't think there's a Planning Commission in the state that is compensated through a pay. They can get reimbursed for travel. They might get a meal that, you know, if they meet at a certain time. They might receive training, that kind of thing. But Planning Commission is a lot of volunteer work. And I've tried, I've talked to our staff about, is there any way to get some sort of compensation? Because it is work, not as much as council, but it is work. I like the idea of training. If you don't come in already knowing some things, it is, it's a very difficult commission to step onto. So there, I, I like the idea. I don't think marketing and promotion is going to be it. I think you have to, just going out to the public and saying, this is what you have got to do, you've actually, I was asked, I was asked to run for Planning Commission, or put my name in the hat, because the person knew that I had experience with the code, with understanding the way local government works, especially having worked in planning. And, you know, and we look at it, we've got two architects on, we've got somebody who's a permitting consultant. We've got people, we have had one person who used to be on council, but also has worked with N-Round, so they understand a lot of that. We have a planner. Those are the type of people that understand what their role is on Planning Commission. So it's a wonderful, but it's a wonderful stepping stone for somebody who says, hey, I just, I really want to learn more about this. So I think those are my things. So I, if I had a choice, I, I'm going to say, yes, next council, see if you can talk about this. I do think there needs to be more time allowed for people to apply in for Planning Commission. I love that idea of talking to people about what does this mean? What would your, what do you have to do for this? Or having some sort of mentorship on that. I think that would make somebody feel a lot better who is not familiar with what's going to be their responsibility on that. But also knowing, you know, even me looking at, okay, there was eight meetings last year, even though they're supposed to meet twice a month, they may not have things to evaluate and vote on. So there might be, you know, that, there could be a little less stress taken off of certain people. You know, the anxiety of, oh my gosh, I'm running in the same time commitment as council. It isn't the same, it's close, but it's not the same. So that's my thoughts.
So you would like to, I was going to say, table, table this appointment
That's fine.
for the next council, the, the post-December 2nd council?
I think that's what I'm hearing, is that we're either saying, yes, that's kind of the thought on the table, or we're, we're tabling it for a different date. Does that mean that this council, if we tabled, does that mean this council has to do it before we walk away on the second?
What I would recommend, if you're thinking of bringing it back at a certain date, is to postpone it, not table it. Because table it means that there is no certain date coming back, and if it isn't picked up, then it automatically dies by the end of the next business meeting. So what I'm hearing is that you want to have this conversation, you just want to do it later. And if that's the case, then what I would recommend is a motion to postpone.
Can, can this council postpone
Yes.
to a date that the new council would be sitting? Okay.
All right. Counselor Tapia Vega, would you like to add to the discussion?
Sure, I'd love to. Thank you, mayor. Yeah, go for it.
My question is more legal, is would it be postponing, or postponing to consider Brian, Counselor Wong's opening? Or would it be tabling to consider, just, or would this council like to just make a motion to reopen it? So I think those are the two things. So I believe that tabling it would mean that you continue to have this applicant's discussion at a different date, not reopening it. So we want to just be clear from staff direction.
Or this council could make the decision to reopen tonight?
Correct, which would be a motion to reopen that.
Of would it, could choose to fill that seat at a later date?
I don't see how we would be able to do it by December 3rd anyway. So yes, it would be the new council having the discussion on a new applicant pool.
Okay, so I guess that's something we need to decide as well, if we go that direction. Okay. I do want to quickly hear from Counselor Tapia Vega, give my thoughts, and then we do need to come to a consensus, if possible, with six, who knows? So, Counselor Tapia Vega?
Sure, thank you. So a few, a few moving parts for me here, and I just want to make sure I hit them all. First and foremost, thank you to the committee that did the interviews. We really appreciate your insight. The one thing I, I don't like about this process, and what I've heard is, I, I keep hearing the same term, it wasn't sufficiently marketed. I actually, Counselor Gallegos, I truly appreciate what you brought up tonight. That's, I didn't know any of, that's, that's way more naive than I even thought it was. I, I think, kind of blaming this on our staff and on our communications and marketing staff is, is kind of a cop-out for this, for this council. What I would want to do is remind this council that if we don't like the results of this particular recruitment process, it, it should fall on us. We're the ones who came up with this process, and a year ago, this process did amazing, amazing things. We filled so many vacancies with this exact process. So I think we should just be, take responsibility for the fact that if we don't like the, the process and the overall results of the process, it is not on our staff. So that's the one thing. So that's the one thing, I just want to make clear, it is on us. Uh, the other part of this that I want to make sure I emphasize is the fact that this is our process and we should, it would only be fair for us to follow through with this process. So regardless of what you feel about the process, it went through, and the two applicants that we had, one has already been appointed, the other we're speaking on, uh, they followed the rules, they got their application in on time, and I think it's only fair that we take a vote. Uh, and the other thing I would remind council of is, if this vote fails, it technically reopens regardless, because now there is a vacancy on Planning Commission. And because of the process that we built, at some point, that it's going to open up again. So, uh, my recommendation is that we just vote and see what happens.
Alright. Um, my thoughts are, I think that throughout my years on council, we have constantly struggled with filling boards and commissions. As, that's why we redesigned the whole process and changed the term limits and did all of that to, to increase recruitment. And I think we are trying, I don't think we're there yet. There's obviously things we should continue to, um, to invest more in, to get more applicants. Cause regardless of who it is, two applicants for two vacancies is not ideal, um, even if they are two highly qualified, great candidates. Um, so I think that the next council should really consider, you know, continuing to make this a priority, as you guys meet in your, um, uh, retreat in strategic planning. Um, think, let's think critically on how we can address this problem long-term, because it is a problem. During that same time on council, when we have had these issues with lack of applicants, um, I don't remember ever having a conversation to this level, um, where we are, we had the two applicants, uh, we felt like they were qualified, everyone seems to agree, at least on that, um, and then decided not to appoint, uh, in an effort to bring in more candidates. And so I guess the question that keeps popping into my mind is if we do want to have more applicants, we do want to expand, uh, we do want to expand the candidate pool, in hopes, in hopes for what? Like, in hopes for, to get a excellent qualified candidate? We already have that. And so to me, it genuinely, and this is just my opinion, and a bunch of folks will disagree, as is usual, um, but it feels personal. It feels like there are folks that do not want to see, uh, a specific person, whether that be because they're a sitting counselor, or for other reasons, not on the committee. And so that's, that's how it feels. And so, and, and this, once again, this is my, my persp, perception of things, as you mentioned earlier, Counselor Friedland, is that, um, there could be a public perception of what we do, and I think that is true. I think, you know, voting not to appoint, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Wong for perception reasons could also be perceived the other way around as well, is that, um, the appointment's not going through for other, like, political agendas or whatever it may be. Now, once again, that's probably, some people feel that way, another group of people feel the opposite, as you mentioned, they agree completely with what you said, which is fair. And a majority of people aren't watching city council meetings, um, and so, um, aren't paying attention to, to, to this. I just, that, that's just my perspective, and once again, folks are going to get upset with what I say, but it's my honest opinion. But, I do want to hear from you all, because this is a team decision, it's not what does JD want, um, it's more so what, what does council, how do you all move on forward? How do you want to move forward? And if, and I'm willing to, to listen to you all and hear you all out and move in that direction, even if, you know, it's different from how I feel. Um, and so, just hearing from you all, it sounds like there are at least three of you that would clearly like to reopen the application. Uh, and I'm hearing from Councilors Gallegos and Counselor Gallegos to move forward with the appointment of Mayor, or of, of Mr. Brian Wong to the Planning Commission. And I'm hearing from Counselor Tapia Vega, is let's just vote. So, that's my summary. And then me, you know, just, oh, I'm sorry. Um, okay, so anyways, um, that's sort of where things are. Would anyone like to add anything to discussion? Because otherwise, someone, if someone would like to make a motion to get to your point and vote, we can do that. But I would like to hear if the folks would like to add on to what others are saying, have further discussion.
So I also have some reservations to leaving Planning Commission with an even number of commissioners. So the same way we're split here tonight, they're also going to be split on future decisions until that vacancy is filled.
Okay. And, how many times does the Planning Commission meet from now until end of the year? Any more times?
One, I believe.
Once?
For orientation, right?
Well, I would like a meeting in December, so we could have a land juice item or two on that agenda on the 10th, but we wouldn't be meeting on the 24th.
If I understand correctly, it would be, we, if we open the process again, uh, if we vote no, then we'd have to open the process again, so Planning Commission would be even numbers for more than just one.
Depends on the timeline, right?
Yeah, I mean, it depends on what we decide, the timing, yeah. Alright, um, so, um, would anyone like to add to the conversation? If not, would someone, feel free to make a motion, we can vote regardless of what that motion is, um, what, um, I just need some folks to give direction on how you'd like to proceed.
I'm going to move that we postpone till the December 2nd meeting.
December 2nd?
Yes.
That's our next meeting, right?
Yep, that's a, that's like the transition meeting? So you'll, you'll have, there'll be, I guess, two parts, there'll be this council, and then part B will be the second council. So when you say you'd like to postpone to the December 2nd, are you saying?
December 16th, when the new city council is on?
December 16th.
I moved to postpone until December 16th meeting.
Okay. So, Council Barnes is making a motion to postpone, using?
Can I ask a clarifying question? Would that also be to reopen the, uh, application process?
Uh, yes, postpone and reopen the application process.
Thank you.
So you, sorry, so you would like applications completed by the 16th and interviews to have that conversation? Sorry, there's just a lot of nuances on what postponing means that staff would want clarity on.
Yes.
Okay, so reopen beginning tomorrow?
Yes.
And have interviews conducted by this council committee, because it would need to be, to then debate with the new council?
Yes. Okay. So you, you're, I just wanted to make sure you made that motion, so I can do my job here, right? So you're officially making that motion to postpone?
Yes. I'm making the motion to postpone, uh, postpone this decision and reopen starting tomorrow, uh, until December 7th, December 16th. Thank you.
Are we allowed to ask questions before a second to just clarify the motion?
Sure.
Or here, second, now you can.
Okay, thank you for the second. I just want to think through the timing, right? Because staff has, would have to publish, um, then we would have to schedule, uh, the committee, you know, the small, small group, do the interviews, make a recommendation, come back. I'm just not sure if there's enough time between now and the 16th to do that. And I don't know when our meetings are scheduled for January, but, um, I don't know if there's much benefit either, because Planning Commission is meeting before that anyway, so we're, we're already going to miss the December meeting.
December 10th.
December 10th. Um, so if there's a January meeting?
January 6th.
That's our meeting, right?
Yep.
So if we're meeting January 6th, we could potentially do it then, just to give more time for publicity, more time for all the steps that have to happen, as long as, when is the Planning Commission meeting that, in January? The first one, is it that Thursday?
Doesn't seem to be up on our calendar yet, so I'd need staff to have.
Maybe hasn't been determined.
Maybe.
It could be as early as January 14th, again, depending on what applications come through between now and then.
So, so as early as January 14th. So if we, if, if we met on the, if we postponed until the 6th, we would still meet the timeline, and it would give us just more flexibility to staff and to our process. So we might be able to do both things.
So January 6th, you're saying?
Yeah, correct.
So do I need to unsecond that, so he can amend?
Well, motion's like, we can vote, and it will fail.
Yeah, we could. It could also be a friendly amendment that you both would accept, potentially. So it could, it could go either way.
Yeah, am I supposed to do that first?
Yes, if you want to accept the friendly amendment, yes, Counselor Barnes.
Yes, I accept the friendly amendment.
Yeah, I, I thought he was making, you're making the amendment to move it to the January 6th, I'm accepting the amendment.
I move, we move it to the, oh, we move, move, to January 6th.
2026?
2026.
Second.
Okay.
Can I just, I have a couple of points for clarification. Uh, so, January 6th, between now and then, we were instructing staff to reopen the application, close the application, reconvene the subcommittee, but at that point, we might have a new council, so I don't know what happens there. And then at the January 6th meeting, everything would come back, and we would make the decision on council then?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Are we also directing staff on how we're marketing? I mean, that's the biggest thing everybody keeps talking about, right? How are we supposed, we can't do an open house, we do now and then, obviously, so to the people who are kind of, uh, asking us to, to push this forward, how do you suggest we market, and how do you suggest we actually get the applicants that we want? Because that's obviously been the biggest point of contention.
Well, I heard you say that it's council's responsibility, that we shouldn't blame it on others. So I would suggest all of us get out there and start knocking on the doors of people who have experience in this.
I, I would agree, however, I would like to hear from the people who specifically made the claim that it was not marketed well.
Uh, that's me, and yes, I think we should get out and beat the bushes and find professional contacts, and, uh, just to be perfectly clear, I've always felt that it's council's responsibility. Staff did market it, and any failure in the process, I think is still ours. Uh, so I think we should be part of the process of doing what we can to supplement what the city is doing for marketing for one of our boards and commissions. So I do feel like it's our responsibility, and if we come up with any processes that could potentially benefit the recruiting process, I think we should, I think we should do that and make those suggestions.
Well, hopefully we'll make the, uh, Colorado Hometown Weekly, so that'll be a great opportunity. Sorry. My wife is going to be mad at me for, because I always make jokes when times are a little tense, so apologies. I mean, I would say, the first thing I would say is, I'm not a marketing expert, so I appreciate your point, I hear you, it's a, it's a fair criticism. But, you know, I, I would, I would lean on staff to say, you know, what are the things we can still do, shake the trees? And certainly agree with the rest of, of the folks that have just spoken, yeah, we should, we need to get out there and, and, um, and talk to people and say, hey, you know, you'd be a great candidate, come on and, and think about this, it'd be a good opportunity for you. So, um, I definitely hear you, um, but I also think we direct staff based on the process that we've determined, and I think it's fair for us to say, hey, you know, it feels like this wasn't as comprehensive as it could have been compared to the year before, so, you know, let's, let's trust in the experts to go and try to find those holes that maybe existed. So, maybe a cop-out?
What would your, um, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no problem.
What would your ideal candidate look like? If we want to, if we want to market it, right, we have to, let's put out some things that we're looking for. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
If we're going to ask folks to apply, they need to know what kind of candidate we're looking for.
Yeah, I think somebody with experience in the, in the code, um, somebody with, um, you know, diverse perspective, diverse lived experience, um, uh, you know, somebody that maybe, um, brings a, a new perspective that we haven't had on Planning Commission before. Somebody with, um, you know, uh, running a small business that understands the challenges of a, of a small business applying to the planning process. I think there's a lot that could probably come out, especially if I thought about it for a while.
True.
Um, what, what would you say your ideal candidate might be?
I think we have, I think we have an ideal candidate. I think when folks are hiring for a position and they market it, like, we, we experienced this internally, like, when we were hiring for city managers, but before, um, before Ms. Doling stepped in, uh, prior to that, um, we sent in a bunch of applications to the community on all the things we look for, and we had a community input on that process as well. Um, and actually, that first batch of applicants, um, wasn't very strong. And so we're like, um, this was to, this is to fill Mr. Klopoff's seat. Um, and, and then, we're like, okay, let's push more, let's expand more. And then we were, through that process, when we did do that, we found a, a great applicant in, uh, Fritz Bre, you know, who served the city, uh, for years as well. So that was awesome, and that worked. So, you know, um, as you're mentioning, that was a great, um, example of, of what you're intending to do. Um, at the same time, though, when we did experience that, the few applicants we did get were unqualified, um, they didn't have a strong background in city management, they maybe were a department head here and there, but they had no, like, city management experience. Um, and like for, or they lived, they lived in a different area of the country, and so they didn't have, like, Colorado experience. So just a lot of different reasons, uh, we ended up reopening it. I do think it, as I mentioned earlier, um, I do feel like we have an ideal, uh, candidate already, uh, which is why, you know, I'm, I don't know if I'll be supportive in, in the proposed motion, uh, because, once again, going back to my original question, is, we're doing all this reopening in hopes of what? In hopes of finding a candidate that's strong, experienced, and all that?
Yep.
And so I guess this is probably where we're going to disagree, of course, but, um, I feel like it's there, and the only, I, I, it's, it's, I'm finding it hard to come up with the reasons not to go with what's been proposed. I heard from you, you're, you're one concerned, but other than that?
So, let me, let me, let me dive a little deeper, because I, as I said in my recommendation, which I'm sure you all read, um, I do agree that, uh, Brian Wong is a qualified candidate. And I, but through the process, right, we all have the ability to know how marketing was going. And I think it is a challenge to see a opening that is not, has, does not have enough applicants, doesn't have an applicant for it. And instead of saying, hey, let's, let's work on this, putting one of our names in the ring. To me, that's the perception issue. That is a challenge. He had, right? An understanding of the process that others in the community didn't. And so, that's the perception issue that I'm talking about. So, I think, I'm not necessarily disagreeing with you, that he's not a qualified candidate, to be clear. I'm saying, to me, it's a process issue and a perception issue that I think we need to guard against as this council.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question of staff? If someone who isn't on council, just a resident, were to come and ask, uh, how many applications have been received for a certain board, is that information that would be publicly available?
Yeah, we should.
Okay.
I have a question too.
Yes.
Tell staff. So, um, with the proposed motion on the table, um, will, um, Ma, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Wong, who will transition to, no, no longer, uh, on council, uh, will he be able to still keep his application in the mix?
Yes.
Okay.
This would extend the deadline, valid applications submitted would remain in, in the bin for consideration.
Okay, good.
Alright, um, go ahead.
I think we also need a contingency plan, what happens if no other candidates come forward after we go through the trouble of reopening this process? And we are, once again, left with one application for one vacancy for a volunteer position.
Yeah, I think that's something that the next, whoever in the council. Yeah, I think that's something that the next, whoever in the council at that point will have to consider. Not your problem taking this. Okay, well, I, I do want to address the motion, though, that has been laid forward. So, Council Barnes did lay out that motion to postpone the, the appointment to this vacancy, reopen applications with a deadline of January twenty-sixth. And that, at that January twenty-sixth deadline is where that, the council-
Six.
Twenty-sixth. Six or twenty-sixth?
Six.
Six.
January sixth.
Right.
You can go to the twenty-sixth, but that's not a meeting.
I mean, on, who knows, on January sixth, anything can happen. And so on the January sixth meetings, that council will be required to, will, will be expected to fill that vacancies.
Correct. If they don't, I suppose they could again postpone it and reopen.
Okay. That's, that's, that's up to, that's up to you, to those guys, right? Yeah, and they can do that how, for however long they choose to, right? So it'll totally up to them. Okay. All right, so there's the motion. There's a second. Any discussions on that? We might need to do a roll call, we'll, we'll see. All right. Motion and seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
No. And there it goes.
Would you like a roll call vote?
Why does it matter?
For, just for her records, if she didn't hear who said yes and who said no.
I would like to do a roll call vote, yes.
Do, would you like me to just clarify?
Or you can tell me.
Sure. So that, that motion, it ended in a three-three split with Councilors Tapi Vega, Councilor Gallegos and myself voting no.
And that was the original motion as amended? The motion as amended?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. All right.
So the motion fails.
Yes. Okay. We gotta, we gotta get through this. So, what, is there an alternative that someone would like to propose to what's already been motioned? Because we can vote in another way and then, from there, seek clarification on how to move forward if we can get two of, or both.
You're the most passionate. Why don't you make the motion? And you don't have a conflict of interest.
I mean, I got nothing to lose now. Well, yeah, I just want to do that just for the record, okay? So I will make the motion to move forward with the appointment of Brian Wong to the planning commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Okay, ready for the vote? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
So that motion is three-three split and it fails with Councilors Friedland, Barnes and Sampson voting against.
All right.
Now what do we do? So, a point of clarification for the attorney. We would like to, you know, I'm willing to work with you all to, to make sure we can get to a consensus, to move forward. A decision on this is expected to be made tonight on how we move forward, or what would be the result if we don't come to a consensus? A continued three-threes?
Well, someone, someone could put another motion on to, to continue it or postpone if we wanted, anyone wanted to revisit that. Otherwise, the vacancy still exists, so we're still under standard protocols to come back and try to get it filled at the next regular meeting.
On December second?
Well, or for you to take some sort of action and decide what to do.
Okay, well.
Does, can I, can I ask a question? Does it not just open back up in March?
Yeah, so that would, sorry, I was helping clarify. Because we have the standard process, we would probably, in any other board situation, just let it lie until March when we do our semi-annual recruitment process, which is when we fill vacancies that occur. So I think I would like direction tonight of more consensus tonight if council wants to do something sooner than that to reopen recruitment. Otherwise, we would follow our process that has been established.
Okay.
Also, the, the next meeting, either council or the meeting after that, the new council could also provide direction to do something different than that as well. That is also an option.
All right, um, I, so I would like to see our council work together and come to a consensus, so here's what I'm going to say. First, regardless of what decision we make tonight, folks in the public are going to be very upset with us, whether they're on one side or the other. As you saw, our council is very split, three-three. I think there'll be a perception, as you mentioned, that, you know, a sitting, appointing a sitting councillor could seem like there's a conflict. There could be a perception of that. I, I, on the other hand, feel like that at the same time, even, I agree with what, what you're saying. There could be a, there is a public persp- there is a public perception that if we don't move forward this appointment, it could see as we are being influenced. And there's a perception of that as well. Both things that can be true. Like, this is me being objective. So, because of that, what makes this job, and especially this mayor job, very difficult, as one of you will probably fill that seat, is we're constantly juggling, what is this person going to think about that? What is this person going to think about this? And people are going to get mad at you. And that's what makes this job so hard. There are folks in the community that are huge supporters of the work I've done, and there's folks in the community that don't agree with some of the, the votes and decisions that I've made in, in this position, position. And I always find it tricky, especially in the mayor position, because not only are you juggling public perception and their views of you, you're also juggling, you know, your fellow councillors and their thoughts on how you conduct, you know, the meeting, things like that. And then you're also, you know, you have more meetings with staff. You have more meetings to understand, you know, their, you know, curiosities and their thoughts on, on how we vote. And then that also impacts your decision. And you're constantly being tugged in different directions and, and, and folks are giving your opinions. And no matter what, folks are upset with you. And so, I'm saying this because this, because one of you is, is going to fill my seat. And when you do do that, it's something just to be fully aware of. You're never going to be able to please one person. You're never going to be able to make everybody happy. And it makes the job really difficult, the hardest part for me personally. That all being said, the ultimate goal is what is in the best interest of the residents, of your fellow councillors and of city staff. And how can we just move along? I don't foresee, I feel like we are at this kind of stalemate, so I'll be the bigger person in this and show you how, you know, how my desire, or not, not show, but like, I would like to set an example of my desired outcome on how a council should conduct itself. And even if you feel like it's not what you personally want, you do it for an effort of progress and moving forward. So, Councilor Barnes, if you remake your motion, I would be willing to reconsider my vote. I move to postpone this decision until January sixth and ask the city to reopen the process for applications.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
No.
That motion passes forward to two. All right, so the next council that does, you know, so, so let's just, let's, for the public now, so they're aware on how to proceed, on how we are going to proceed, let's, let's once again share those dates. So tomorrow, the application will be reopened, correct?
Correct.
Then, Mayor Protem Wong's application will still be a part of that pool, or does he need to reapply?
It will remain part of the pool.
Okay. Then, other folks will be eligible to apply up until what date?
The holidays make it tricky, so I was looking to try to make it longer than what our most recent one was. And I would suggest December nineteenth, so that the council committee would have the week after the Christmas holiday and before the New Year holiday to conduct interviews, to be able to make it into the packet by January sixth. But I am completely open. I just was doing some rough math. I would put the application period about eight days longer than it was this past time.
December nineteenth?
Completely, completely a council decision, just throwing out a date to get conversation started.
Thank you for doing that. That works for me.
That's four. That's a full month. I mean, we're at the eighteenth. You do a full month to the, yeah.
I mean, I want to hear from you four, because you'll be on that council, so, what works for you?
That works.
Yeah, I think that's a good amount of time. And we have the, the, the week after and the week after that. So we have two weeks where we might be able to find a day to do our deliberations. So I think that works.
Okay. So applicants will have until December nineteenth to submit their written applications. They'll give opportunities for interview. And then on the January sixth meeting is where you will be, both the councils expected to, to fill that vacancy, correct?
At least have it on the agenda to discuss.
It'll be on the agenda. All right. Did, was staff, like, any further clarification on any of that?
I suppose I am assuming, which is, means I need further clarification, that the new council would appoint the subcommittee for the interviews and not this council.
Yeah, I think that would make the most sense. Okay. Anyone on council want to add anything, or do we feel like we're good to move on? All right. Well, that wraps up council appointments for tonight. And I think we can go grab, yeah, thank you. All right, we'll conclude tonight with staff reports, beginning with our, WCA attorney filling in tonight, City Attorney's Report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight I have a request for council to authorize the city manager to extend a closing date on a transfer of property, which is a portion of Lot eighteen Vista Business Park. Council previously approved this transfer on September second and authorized the city manager to close on September twenty-sixth or within sixty days of that. And due to unforeseen circumstances, closing has been delayed. And so we would ask for council by general affirmation to allow the city manager to reschedule closing as needed to effectuate the transfer as approved by council.
Yes.
Are there any objections?
Any objections? Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
All right, on to the city manager's report.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council, so a few items tonight. So, as we mentioned before, we had our third annual employee celebration. So I had mentioned it because city facilities were closed. And I'm happy to share kind of a picture up above of one of the award recipients. And so this was the third time that we've done it, where we honor our employees for our safety award and our core value awards. And just pleased to announce that, you know, we had two, either staff or team members, receive the core value of accountability, community focus, innovation, integrity and teamwork. And also like to give a special shout out to Casey Carlson, Senior Civil Engineer, who has been in front of you a few times as he was selected as this year's core value champion for being nominated in multiple categories. And most notably, one of his larger projects, which was the Public Street Planter Project that you now see, which was coordinated with multiple departments and a huge success. So just congratulations to him and the contribution he made to the community and city. Also, excited to announce one of our newer grant programs, our Vacant to Vibrant Program is now live. You can click that website to access the application fee. But this is the free sales and use tax rebate program. And it's designed to encourage the activation of vacant commercial in industrial spaces. So interested businesses can review the eligibility and always contact staff if they have any further questions. And then, also excited to announce, we, as a city, received two major grants for next year. Two of these were also discussed during the 2026 budget. And so the first one is our court management case system, which is hopefully allowing us to transition to a paperless case processing and file system. And then, also excited to announce, we received that multi-year Dr. Cog Building Policy Collaborative Jurisdictional Sub Award. And so this is really for, through the Federal Climate Pollution Reduction Grant and intended to advance reducing building-related climate pollution emissions through local policy change. And just a final reminder, we have the Holiday Food Drive in partnership with Sister Carmen going on. And collections, public collections are at the Collective Art Center through December first, and they are always ongoing at the library. Looking ahead, we will be canceling our November twenty-fifth workshop. And then December second, we'll have two meetings, regular meetings. So the first is with this current council, considering some consent agendas and recognition of outgoing council members. We will adjourn and have the Judge Baelhaj install our new council in Oath of Office. And then adjourn a second meeting to select the mayor and Mayor Protem for that evening. So, that gets us into December. Thank you again.
All right, thank you for that update. All right, we'll wrap up tonight with council reports, starting on this line, Councilor Sampson.
I only had one question. I believe we, somebody brought up last time, do we want to give some of the council contingency fund to Sister Carmen? Even though, you know, staff payments did get renewed, there's still going to be higher costs for health insurance and other expenses. I don't know if we, I just wanted to bring that up again, see if that's something we wanted to do, talk about, or not.
Yes, I do believe other folks on council did bring up that possible idea. I think we have, oh, two thousand, or sixteen hundred left, sorry.
I would just suggest you direct staff for the remaining balance, but yes, somewhere between eighteen and two thousand.
No math.
Apologize, I don't have it off the top of my head.
What would, yeah, I mean, it's up, it's up to you all. If someone has an idea or would like to propose spending that money for Sister Carmen or another organization, we can, we can do that tonight if you'd like, or it'll, or we, we don't have to use, we don't have to-
You don't have to.
Yeah. So it's up to you all.
That was, that was my idea, so I'm still in favor of it. And I don't know what the rest of council thinks.
So you would like to, to direct staff to use the remainder of our contingency funds towards- Sister Carmen, yes.
For Sister Carmen's food bank specifically, right? Or does it matter?
Doesn't matter now.
Okay.
How do the rest of you feel about that?
I'm in favor.
Likewise.
All right, sounds like we have consensus on that.
We'll get that processed, thank you.
Anything else? Councilor Gallegos.
Nothing for me tonight.
All right. Councilor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to be testifying to the Air Quality Control Commission on Thursday. And I'll represent this as well as I can. It's on ozone non-attainment. And I am really grateful for staff who contributed information and I can present to the state to see that we, we are actually seeing impacts here. Some of them are anecdotal, some of them are real impacts to individuals. We have a problem. Where weather disasters right now cost this country one hundred and, one hundred and one billion dollars. So, we, we're living in this changing environment. And I think the way we're responding with our climate action plan and multiple other actions that we've taken, even our EV policies that are in place and our affordable housing, I think we're moving in the right direction. And I'd just like to offer that anyone else who might have something that they can provide to me to testify, that would be great if you have any knowledge that you're being impacted by ozone non-attainment. Jamal Gilmore, who was appointed to the Human Rights Board, just texted me and said, thank you all for trusting him. So, it's already, there are people paying attention apparently out there. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Councilor Barnes. Councilor Friedland?
Yes. Just wanted to give you an update from LoSaV. They had a positive joint meeting with the Erie Open Space Board as well. I think it was good conversation. They do that with Erie and with Louisville annually. I also wanted to, there was a public comment about, and maybe you've seen the, the news around, that the FAA kind of officially said, these are the routes. And there was some publicity through RMA about that as well. They had an open house. I think that FAA publication, it kind of, you know, potentially is the opening, as you heard today, of a time for us to object officially. And so, we already have a letter that we sent recently. I would ask council, for council support to basically resubmit the same letter. You know, with, it's basically our objection. We've got some reasons in there. And so, I think that- And so I think that would be easy, looking at staff, maybe, to say that wouldn't be a hard thing to do. It would be appropriate. And so we'd love maybe to see if council is okay with that, just to resubmit. What do people, is it okay? No, no objections? I also know Mayor Pro Tem Wong, you, you mentioned a superior letter, I think, that they were working on.
I was planning on bringing it up in my comments.
Okay, great, then I'll, then I'll wait for that.
Yeah.
And I just want to, you know, reflect a little too, if I can, for a second. You know, S R A B, I mentioned, you know, there's quite a few people flowing off. There's, you know, somebody from S R A B who's been elected this cycle. And I was on S R A B before that and the Waste Board. And, you know, some of the people from the Waste Board moved over to the S R A B when that combination occurred. And I think it feels like an end of a chapter for the group, with some folks, you know, kind of moving off. And so I, you know, it's, it's, it's bittersweet, because, you know, certainly having those people that were really pivotal in building the group, standing it up, being a part of that, being okay with ambiguity. You know, they're, they're ready to say, I'm going to, I'm going to spend, you know, my first Thursday or second Thursday of a month a little differently. But certainly, I think it's also a good opportunity for new folks to come in and some fresh perspectives and make sure that group is really functioning at a super high level. So bittersweet, but I just want to say that out loud, that, you know, it's, it's interesting to see how these things evolve over time. So, everything from me, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Tapi Vega.
Just one thing from me. Just really thank you to everyone that we appointed to the boards and commissions tonight. Those, those are, those are tough. So those are long terms and we, we love the work you all do. So just thank you for being willing to work and do it for free for the city. We really rely on you for, for a lot of things. So just a huge thank you to everyone who was appointed tonight. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. I'm, I'd like to go ahead and go next. For my comments, it's just, we did have members of the public tonight come to speak about traffic safety in their neighborhoods, specifically in the Wanaka Lake Trail area. And, you know, staff has, has had the opportunity to sit down and meet with some of those folks. We also attended sort of a walking field trip in that area, specifically along that, that road where the pickleball courts meet, meet the neighborhood. And so, you know, we had the opportunity to meet the city manager and I and Public Works Director, to have an opportunity to kind of look at that area and figure out, you know, what's possible, what's not. But, you know, I really want to make sure, since, you know, I'm running, you know, only have a, I guess this would be my penultimate meeting, but my last council, official council comments, is that I, you know, I would really like to see some changes happen in that area to make, to make crossing the street specifically near the pickleball court area safer for pedestrians, whether that be adjustment to the parking on one side of the road or the other, whether that be striping signage, moving the crosswalk, where folks can have that, you know, the flashing crosswalk. Just, just kind of some ideas that folks have come up with. I would like to see staff prioritize that as, as, as a traffic safety issue. And like I said, staff has already been working on this and they already have data information on the area. And so I just wanted to see if council would be supportive in seeing if we could, you know, prioritize that, that's area of, of Lafayette, where in the Wanaka Lake Trail neighborhood, as, as an area to make traffic safety adjustments, to make cro, pedestrian, specifically pedestrian crossings safer when entering and exiting the pickleball court area. And I just wanted to see if you guys, what your thoughts on that were. That's, that's where I, that's what I feel, to see if folks were supportive or they wanted more clarification on exactly what I'm seeking. I just wanted staff to sit down and meet with those residents again and to figure out how to, how to make their neighborhood safer. That's really what I'm hoping for.
I'm supportive.
Absolutely, I'm supportive. There are so many people utilizing the lake, the pickleball courts, playgrounds, so anything to enhance safety there.
Counselor Barnes?
I'm in support of it, as long as we have an understanding that, I mean, I, I see the bad behavior and it's, it's unacceptable. This, just this morning, I saw somebody doing, I wish I had your number on speed dial. Someone is driving twice the speed limit and then disappeared. And I don't know if they cut through the Wanaka Lake Trail head, uh, trail, sorry, direction. But I know that there are multiple places that people are redirecting. So yes, I'd like to make sure that we do address that specific turn. I, I don't have a hard time understanding how, how bad that is. I do think we need to address that, maybe it's with a speed cushion. But I also think we need to understand, like, if that is a slower point, where do, where does this bad behavior move? So I just want to make sure that we're, we also consider, like, what are the impacts? Yes, we need to do it, but what are, what are going to be impacts? So we can.
Of course.
Hopefully have an idea of what, what's next, as people try to figure out how to speed through the city.
Yeah. So, and so our city managers, sorry, I didn't mean to just throw that at you, but it's more so just like another opportunity to sit down and meet with the residents. And I know you're already doing this and I know you've already met with them and exchanged emails. But just prioritizing it as a traffic safety issue in the community.
Yep, we can come back to council with options and how it aligns with our version zero plan and where this street falls in the priority level two.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's all for me. Because it is Mayor Pro Tem Wong's final meeting, it's only appropriate that we give you the final word for tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Gosh. Last meeting. All of us will face it one of these days. So first and foremost, I want to thank the residents of Lafayette for electing me twice to be able to serve, for the honor to serve you all. And for those that don't know, I have ran for election three times, lost my first time. So if you didn't make it this time, those of you who ran last time, you're on again, you'll never know. But I do want to thank the residents. It has been the honor of my lifetime to be able to serve the community that I live in and I call home. While we, I have done my best to try and represent the entire community. I know at times there are members of the community that we are on different sides of the issue. And it is just what happens unfortunately when you're trying to balance so many competing interests. And so I want to acknowledge them for their support and their believing in me and representing them. So thank you to the community. I also want to thank city staff. So many of you have changed over the last six years and so many of you have stayed the same. But thank you for all of you, for all the work you do for our community. It is amazing, amazing to see the work that you all do. And then I want to thank members of council. It has been an honor and a pleasure to serve with each and every one of you. Some of you, it's been a very long time, six years. Both of you. Others, it's only been four years, Nicole. And then some of you, it's just been relatively new. So, you know, for those of you who are continuing on this journey up here on this dais, I would encourage you to think about some of the issues that you're coming, that are coming forward. I think affordability is a huge issue that this council, the future councils will be having to deal with. It, I am concerned that our sales tax rate is one of the highest now in the metro area, if not the state. That really concerns me, especially as a regressive tax, as sales taxes are. So really concerned about that, really concerned about affordability. And while we have to figure out how we balance supply along with our, our desire to have open space and all those things that we love, because unfortunately, to drive costs down, it does deal with density. And that has to be figured out. So I wish all of you luck in figuring that out. Lastly, I want to thank my family. My wife, who has spent the last six years every Tuesday night at council, watching at home, sending me a text now and then about calming down or getting a little bit more excited. Whichever the case may be, I appreciate that. Between city council and Planning Commission, thirteen and a half years up here, many birthdays, anniversaries, I have been in these chambers. And so I will miss that. Maybe not miss that part of it, actually. Kind of excited to be home. But it's always kind of neat to acknowledge a spouse or a kiddo or family member during a birthday and it ends up in the minutes. So then it's a forever recognized. Maybe I'm just a geek. But thank you for all that you have made this experience. I know everything that I've done, I have, I'm excited for the next chapter, getting involved in the regional level. And that's the other thing too, I do want to just point out to Counselor Barnes, is that Counselor Kearns, Judy Kearns from Lewisville, is actually on the Air Quality Board now, representing Lewisville. And so certainly, I would encourage you to connect with her. And that's why I asked about the rack, because she had just shared some conversations that they had about that. And I encourage this council to pull upon its regional neighbors to really move things forward as a region. I think that is so important. So often, we get stuck in the minutia of what's going on in Lafayette that we forget about what's going on around us. And so that's a very important thing to do. So I encourage you to continue to build those bridges to the communities around us. And, yeah, and finally, I just want to thank the mayor for all that you've done and your service to the city. And I really do appreciate your friendship and your counsel at times. So thank you very much. And with that, thank you all, appreciate it.
Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned, thank you.